Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 30th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Ms. Charles, can you please begin with your spell?
Of course. Buenas noches, bienvenidos. Good evening. The siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there is a second and final opportunity to provide public comments. So if you do not get to go during the first call, we encourage you to stay till the end. To do so, to participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand icon. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Remember that if you wait to raise your hand until the public comment period begins, you may not go. You might not be able to go during that first call, so please raise your hand now if you wish to speak. The board president will usually call our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak this evening, please write student at the beginning or the end of your name so that we can give you priority. On an individual basis, President Brown also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. While you are speaking, please be mindful of the timer that will appear on your screen. If you are still speaking once your time is set, please complete your sentence, but try not to go beyond the allotted time. Thank you. Después de unos procedimientos de inicio, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios de parte del público. Al final de la junta habrá una segunda y última oportunidad. Para quienes no pudieron hacerlo durante la primera llamada, para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de su pantalla. Para participar por teléfono, levante la mano presionando estrella nueve. A favor de hacerlo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentario público, tal vez no podrá ir durante esa oportunidad y tendrá que esperarse. Aparecerá una cuenta regresiva en la pantalla que le avisará cuando ha transcurrido el tiempo. Si continúa hablando cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, a favor de terminar su oración, pero trate de no reemplazarse su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Ms. Charles, can you please call the role of the board?
Student Director Ian Siegel.
Here.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Vicente.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Ty Alper.
Here.
Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Here.
And President Kedee Jabrahim.
President, thank you so much. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll move it.
I'll move by Director Alper and seconded by Director Sinai. Ms. Charles, can you please call the role?
Director Siegel.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes, thank you so much. The motion passes and this evening's agenda is approved. At this time, we are going to move to a special recognition in our agenda honoring the City of Berkeley Police Fire Department. And so I'm going to call on Director Sinai for this presentation.
Thank you so much, President Brown. Liz, could you promote Chief Sprague and our IAFF rep? Are they both on it? No. Liz, are you getting?
Yes, I'm looking for Amory, right?
Yeah, he, I think he, I think they're on there as a, just the first initial.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Ah, the joys of Zoom. There we go. All right. It is an absolute pleasure for me. Oh, wonderful. Welcome. So welcome interim chief David Sprague and Almre Langmo. Tonight, our representatives Berkeley Fire and the, uh, excuse me, the, the, our local union representing our firefighters for the decades of work that they've been doing on our CTE work. I'm thrilled to be able to read this and prepare this presentation because now interim chief Sprague, and I have been working and talking about this for a very long time. And I think it's a great honor and representation that we can be here tonight on my last meeting of the school board, as well as Director Alper, to honor you with the work that you've done. So I'm going to take a brief moment to read the resolution. And then if you two want to say anything afterwards, you're welcome to, as, as long as it's short and sweet. But I'll just start off with, in recognition of the Berkeley Fire Department and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 1227, for their groundbreaking partnership with the USD Career Tech Ed Program and the Berkeley Safety Technical Emergency Pathway, B-Step. Whereas B-Step launched in 2010 and soon became the foundation and inspiration for the development and expansion of career tech education pathways at Berkeley High School that now serve well over one-third of our students, as well as adding outreach into our middle schools to increase career exposure opportunities. And whereas this partnership began in 2001 as a regional occupation program and then expanded in 2010 into B-Step was the dream of now interim Berkeley Fire Chief David Sprague, Berkeley High grad of 1998, and then now captain, then a captain in the department. And whereas Berkeley Fire Department and the IAFF Local 1227 have worked with BUSD's Career Technical Education Department to develop, equip, support, and train students for careers in fire, wildland protection, and emergency services. BFT has provided countless hours of classroom instruction, station visits, ride-along activities on department vehicles, emergency medical technician, student-patient contact hours, and individual mentoring. Whereas the Berkeley Fire Department has been a longstanding member of BUSD's Career Technical Education Advisory Board, playing a leadership role in guiding the program. And whereas a result of this deep partnership, many of our students go on to very rewarding careers in fire, emergency response, nursing, and related healthcare fields. And others have returned to Berkeley High to support our current students. And whereas, as a result of the deep commitment for this program by BFD and IAFF Local 1227, the B-Step CTE pathway at Berkeley High School not only became a model for other career tech education pathways at Berkeley High, but it is now a model for other school districts and fire departments across the state. Therefore, be it resolved by the Berkeley Unified Public School District that we thank, appreciate, commend, and commend the Berkeley Fire Department and the IAFF Local 1227 for their continued leadership, community service, and dedication to Berkeley students. We are thrilled and honored to have you as partners. The work that you've done with our Berkeley students has just been phenomenal. And when we started this, CTE was not a well-represented or well-respected program at Berkeley High. And you have helped elevate it into the gem that it is today. And I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Julie. Yeah, just real briefly, I know you guys are busy. When I graduated Berkeley High in 98, I knew I wanted to work in the fire service. And the years that preceded my graduation, there was no vocational education, no pass, pathway, no interface with the department, no guidance on how to pursue that career. So I bounced around for several years figuring it out and what path I needed to follow. And had some significant challenges in my personal life with people in my family that didn't understand how technical the job was, that it was really a profession. And it was, it was a rocky start. And I think a lot of people get discouraged. That would be great candidates. So because of my experience, that's what drove me to work with our members of our union and our department to create this pathway. And, you know, it's taken almost two decades to get to where we're at. But I really think, you know, what we're about to do is wrap the whole fire department around this pathway so that we have the right education in the high school, the right mentorship opportunities, the right guidance for students, interface opportunities with parents so they can ask questions and understand what the career is about, and they can be proud of their children for pursuing it. And, and when we're done, this is, this is going to be, I think, a model for the United States Fire Service on how to, how to integrate with this, with the school district. We're all experiencing recruitment challenges, so it's just perfectly timed that we're coming to the culmination of this project. And couldn't have done so without Director Sinai, Stephanie Allen, Win Skills, and our, our labor group Local 1227. So thank you very much for the recognition and looking forward to many more years of partnership with you guys.
Wonderful.
Langmo.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Amoria Langmo. I'm a fourteen-year firefighter and president of Local 1227. I just want to, from all the Berkeley firefighters, say thank you so much for acknowledging us as a part of the program. We're really proud to be a part of it. I'm a product myself of a fire department ROP program from San Cruz County where I'm originally from. It means a lot to us to be a part of this. We see it as a pathway to growing our own firefighters straight from the city of Berkeley with strong roots in the community and getting into a great career in public service. It's a great pathway to, you know, good paying jobs with benefits and salaries for our youth. And selfishly for us, no Berkeley firefighter is here by accident. There have been many mentors and coaches along the way to help us get here. And this is how we, you know, respect them is by paying it forward and by helping out the youth in this community. So thank you guys so much for the acknowledgement. We really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. And I know that I speak on behalf of Win Skills and Stephanie Allen as well, that their appreciation to the fire department and to the union for the work that you've done has just been phenomenal. So thank you so much. And thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Major congratulations to both you, Chief Dave and President Langmo. We're very honored to have this partnership with you all. And we absolutely agree with what you said, Chief, that the rest of the nation will follow what Berkeley does. So thank you all so much. And we appreciate till the next few years of you rejoin the board together in partnership. At this time, we will now report out for the closed session. Vice President Babbitt, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Closed session began at 5:35 PM. All members were present for item 3.1.1. This item was moved by Director Sinai and seconded by Director Alper. For item 3.2, this item was moved by Director Alper and seconded by Director Vasudev, approved unanimously. For item 3.3, moved by Director Sinai, seconded by Director Alper, approved unanimously. For item 3.4, we heard an update and gave direction. That concludes the report of closed session.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babbitt. At this time, we will move to what I believe is going to be a bittersweet moment. And we are going to recognize our outgoing board members for their phenomenal years of work and service to the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Tonight is the last meeting for both Ty Alper and Julie Sinai. And I know I join with the rest of the board saying that we are pretty, pretty sad to see you go, but excited to take this opportunity to celebrate all of the phenomenal things that you have done for the school board. And so we'll have a couple of speeches during this time. And then during public comment, we have some surprise guests who are going to come out and say a couple of words to you all. So I'm president, so I get to start first. And I just want to say to Ty and Julie, in preparing for what I would say to you all tonight, I found myself getting pretty emotional thinking about how final tonight is, knowing that your service, your love, your guidance, and your voices on this board will be missed. From the very first day that I met the two of you back in 2017, you have added so much value to our district and on a personal level. You both have added so much value to my life. Julie and Ty, the two of you have exemplified teamwork, exemplified dedication and responsibility for eight years for you, Ty, and for five years for you, Julie. In your time on the board, you have been champions for justice, champions for families, champions for students, staff, and faculty. You've been champions for educator housing, champions for restorative justice, champions for career and workforce pathways, and champions for equity. In your time on the board, the two of you have been advocates for inclusion, advocates for closing the achievement and opportunity gap, advocates for financial responsibility, advocates for academic intervention, and advocates for meaningful professional development. You've been advocates for mental health care, advocates and leaders in effective policymaking, both here in Berkeley and across the state. For the two years the two of you all have been on the board, you've offered yourself as selfless stewards to our, to our beloved district. You've given up five hours of your life every other Wednesday night, a sacrifice that I don't think anybody else in the world would make. But your sacrifices have not been in vain. Because of your service, you gained the collection of sleepless nights. You lost more hours reading through board packets and Friday notes. You gained the side eye from your loved ones for the missing and sacrificing family moments to prioritize moving the district forward. Let all jokes aside, the impact that you all have made, an impact that you've made on this district will forever be engraved in our hearts and forever be engraved in our memories. No, we are not a perfect district, but we are a better district because of your service, because of your diligence, and because of your care. So thank you, Ty and Julie. Thank you for paving the way. Thank you for being collaborative. Thank you for elevating the voices of the voiceless. And thank you for showing the world what it means to truly be Berkeley, bold, equity-focused, real, kind, energetic, lifelong learners, educational champions, and yet activators. Because we know the best is yet to come from the two of you. You are appreciated. You are loved. Your influence has been felt, and you will truly be missed. Tonight, both Julie and Ty have been presented with plaques that read, "In recognition of your vision, your dedication, and your commitment while serving as a member of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education for the years 2014 to 2022 for Ty, and for the years 2018 and 2022 for Julie. On behalf of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education, Ty and Julie, we love you and you will truly be missed." Yeah, all right. Next, before we start the waterworks show, we will hear from Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say good evening to everyone, and I hope everyone had a Thanksgiving full of gratitude for the good things that we often take for granted and for the hard things that come to make us stronger. As we enter into this holiday season, I wish everyone, except Ty and Julie, joyful celebrations. Now, actually, I particularly want to wish you both the best season of rest, relaxation, rejuvenation, and holiday joy possible. Ty, I will truly miss our thoughtful debates. And please know that I've always appreciated our ability to agree and laugh and play afterwards, as well as disagree and still laugh and play afterwards. This has definitely been the strength of our relationship and an asset as being board colleagues. To Julie, I will miss your thoughtful pushback, insightful questions and comments, and most of all, your mentorship and allyship. I remember when you were first appointed to the board, we as PCAD and PAC members, including Ty at that time, were so engaged with the creation of the LCAP plan. And you definitely had the community's back. So many times I was in the audience saying, yes, thank you, Julie. Thank you, Julie. Yeah. And that has carried on through your terms on the school board. So as both of you transition back into public commenters, know that we will strive to ensure your labor has not been in vain. As the path for progression has been laid, expected outcomes will one day be achieved. Thank you so much for your dedicated service.
At next, we will go to Director Vasudev.
Thank you all for coming to tonight's board meeting. I see so many wonderful people with their hands raised, so I'm really excited to hear all the comments. I just want to say that I'm so profoundly grateful that during my tenure on the school board, that my time overlapped with Director Ty Alper and Julie Sinai. Serving during the COVID-19 pandemic has been one of the hardest times to serve on any school board, and I could not have asked for a better set of colleagues in this group. Julie, your background in public health and community engagement was instrumental in helping us better serve our vulnerable families in the district who were the most impacted by the pandemic. I know that you worked hard behind the scenes to make sure that our families had access to vaccines, to testing, and to all sorts of public health resources. And I thank you so much for doing that. I think the public may not know just how hard you worked. And even getting us testing during the, the beginning of the school year when, before the state supplies came in, you, it was really admirable just what you did for our students. So thank you. Even during your last meeting, Julie, you've been such a staunch advocate for our CTE program. A fun fact about Julie, which the public may not know, is that in addition to all of the great things that, that the rest of the board has said, you're also the bitmoji queen on this board. And so I'll miss that about you. I still don't know how to create those. So you have to still teach me, Julie. But, but aside from that, one of the qualities that I admire the most about you, Julie, is your ability to lead with empathy. And I hope to continue to follow in those footsteps during the rest of my tenure on this board. Ty, you're a natural consensus builder. And although you do not possess the same bitmoji skills that Director Sinai possesses, I'm forever grateful for your mentorship and support during these last two years. One of my most memorable moments serving with you was in July of 2021, when the Delta surge was just starting to peak in California and CDPH had released new guidance for school districts. This was the time when most, most school board directors are off, superintendents have a little bit of time to relax. And you and I were with our fam, respective families in Hawaii, poring over the guidance, debating sentence by sentence, emailing the superintendent. We won't do that to you, Superintendent Formoroth, I promise. But, but it, it just showed me how much you cared about, about our kids. And even though, you know, we were debating, asking, you know, all sorts of little, little things that were in those details. I just really admired how, how much you cared about our students. And that's something that, that will always stay, stay with me that, you know, during that time, we literally spent hours just going back and forth on, on guidance. And aside from that, I, I know that I'll just generally will miss geeking out with you on a lot of things like that. But I really also appreciate the strong sense of camaraderie that you brought into this work. And to me, Ty, that, you know, that even though we may not always see eye to eye on things, having that coffee date, having that, that moment to debate and say, you know what? Like, we, we respect each other just because of the care that we don't, clearly don't do this for the stipend. So I really, I really just want to thank you for, for all the love that you bring to our students. And I remember when you encouraged me to run, you said this, I think this is 10 hours of work. You lied to me, but I am, I am forever grateful for that strong sense of camaraderie and collaboration that, that you bring to this work and have brought to this work. And I know you say you're, you're going to take some time to relax, but I know you'll continue to bring to this work behind the scenes. So thank you. And for both of you, I just want to say you've made me a better school board director during our overlapping years. And I know we'll continue to grab cafecito, and I'll see you on social media. You're not too far away. And I thank you both just, just so much because when a lot of, a lot of other school boards have struggled during the pandemic, I really think that because of your professional background and your love for our students, you really brought us closer together as a board and made sure that our students were always the center of our work. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Next, we will go to Director Siegel.
Thanks, President Brown. Although my time on the board has been, I just started, I've, over these past six months, I've really, really seen the strength and the insight of Director Alper and Director Sinai, watching board meetings over the past few years and being on them. I've really found myself really being grateful every time that you guys have commented on different issues we're having. Those comments really, I think, push our thinking and push the things that we're talking about forward and make us question why we're doing them and how we're doing them. And I really am grateful for whenever you guys speak and find myself agreeing with you almost every time. You've both really made this space welcoming for me as a student and encouraged me to voice my opinion. And you've always spoken out in support of student action and student opinion. Director Sinai, I want to thank you especially for your support for the extra student seat on the environmental council. I know that that's going to be coming up soon. I just want to thank you for your support there. And I want to thank both of you again for your commitment and your dedication to our community. I've seen you both be active members. Director Alper, you came to my law class, and I know that you've been doing that for a few years. But what you do at Cal is really amazing. And what we, and we've talked about it in class so many times, that you really serve to be an example to all of us possibly pursuing law careers. And you both do, you both represent how to be a good school board member and how to be a good person. So I really want to thank you to being that good image to what Berkeley is and what Berkeley can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Director Siegel. Next, we will go to Superintendent DeCorn with that.
Well, um, good evening, everyone. Good evening, board directors. Good evening, Ty and Julie, Director Alper and Director Sinai. I'm, I got attitude because I've told them, and some of them, I found out they were leaving, and I won't, won't speak to them anymore. And I've tried my best. And I didn't plan to say anything to you this evening, but it just wouldn't feel right. So I just want to be brief, but want to take this opportunity to really express my gratitude to the both of you for your leadership. Director Brown listed all of your accomplishments on your tenure as the board, on the board, but she did not say like, hello, you hired me. Come on, that might be the greatest, the best thing you did for Berkeley. But you, in all seriousness, were two of the five directors who selected me to be the new superintendent of Berkeley. And so I'm grateful for that. My community, you can blame them for anything that goes wrong. But I, I want to say that you also were two of the reasons why I really wanted to be chosen for Berkeley and why I was so excited and eager to be the superintendent of Berkeley Unified. I knew immediately from your rigorous interview questions that you were serious equity warriors who really believed in education. And as I've gotten to know you even more, I know that is definitely true, and probably even more so, you believe in Berkeley Unified and the mission of our district. So even though you think you picked me, I actually picked y'all. And I picked Berkeley in large part because of who the two of you were as individuals, but also who you were as board directors. I will say that you have shown yourself to be amazing colleagues, pretty cool bosses, and great partners in the work of realizing the four E's. And I'm still upset, but don't get it twisted. I'm still very, very upset at the, at the both of you for, for leaving me. But I am very excited to see the work that I know that you're going to do. Though you're not going to be on the dais, I know that you will continue to be champions for Berkeley public schools and excellence in equity. And I am just grateful for your leadership and the legacy that you have left, and I'm honored to continue the work that you both have started for Berkeley. And I know that whatever you do, whatever it looks like, you will continue to be champions for the students and families of Berkeley Unified. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your service and leadership. And thank you, I think, for choosing me.
It's no, I think about it. Yes, definitely. Thank you all for helping to choose me.
Oh, no, it looks like we lost our president, so I'm sure she's going to, to come back on shortly. Oh, there she is. Good.
I was just, I was just testing you all. Last little goodbye surprise. At this time, we have a very, very special guest who wants to say a couple of words to you all. So we are going to invite a former superintendent of Berkeley Schools, Mr. Donald Evans. I'm sorry, Dr. Donald Evans.
Good evening, board and community. Wait a minute. I was told that I only had one minute. And what can I say in one minute? But anyway, I wouldn't miss this opportunity for nothing in the world to say thank you, board member Alper. Thank you, board member Sinai, for everything that you've done. Great job. We have worked on so many projects, and I was there for six years. And I can't tell the community enough about the treasure that you guys were and will continue to be, because even though you're leaving, you're never leaving really Berkeley because of your commitment, your dedication, and your passion. You'll always be involved. And so, on behalf of the students, I thank you. And while I'm interim superintendent here in Piedmont, Piedmont wants to thank you as well for everything that you've done. And Board Member Alper, I cannot think of anyone who was more dedicated than you in terms of commitment and dedication when it came to the parcel taxes, and I could just go on and on and on on the other things. And Board Member Sinai, I can't think about, I think enough about how instrumental you were with always engaging the city in everything that we did. You were so huge on partnerships and CTE, and I thank you for that. But and like I said, I could go on and on, but I just wanted to be here just to thank you and let you guys both know how much you meant to me. And thank you, as your superintendent said, thank you for choosing me and giving me the opportunity to lead Berkeley, and your trust in me meant a lot. And so, I'm here tonight just to say thank you. And I truly mean that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for everything that you've done for the community as well as for me. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Evans. At this time, we get to hear from the champions, from the advocates, from the directors and educational trainers themselves. First, we will have Director Sinai, and then we will hear from Director Alper.
Okay, I thought I had agreement with Director Alper. He was going to go first, but I I will step up unless Director Alper, you want to.
No, go for it.
Wow, it's hard. It's really hard. So, I I am, you know, in case I look a little awkward, I am reading. I really want to thank everyone for the the moving and kind words. I can't say much more than that, because if I do, I will join President Brown in getting too teary eyed, but I I am I am deeply moved. Serving on the Berkeley School Board for the past four years has been an honor and the most challenging years of my public and professional career. I was sworn in, and as we've heard, December of 2018, and was ready to hit the ground running. My goal was to work with my colleagues to reverse the pervasive, persistent, and predictable opportunity gap in our district. With a revitalized call to action, Directors Brown Director Brown and I joined the dais with reelected Director Alper and Directors Leva Cutler and Appel, inspired by our collective commitment to equity and the years of experience we collectively had, I saw it as a time to do more than just move the needle incrementally on student achievement. I wanted to accelerate change for our district's African American and Latinx students. In January of 2019, our board president, Judy Appel, and her wife Allison were in a life-threatening accident, and her injuries and recovery were of the utmost importance. And we were unified as a board in retaining her seat so she could return. Her contribution to this district has been immeasurable. And this meant that the leadership with the leadership of Director Leva Cutler, who stepped in as president, we were four people doing the work of five. During this same period, we heard a minute ago from former Superintendent Berkeley Superintendent Donald Evans, that he announced at the same time his well-deserved retirement from for the end of the year from the district, meaning that in the midst of all this, the four of us would have to focus on recruiting and hiring a new superintendent while working to make the necessary policy and budget decisions to move this district forward. We did some amazing work during this time. We hired a new superintendent, Dr. Stevens. We launched the beginning of the African American Success Framework. We prepared and successfully passed measures E G and H. Berkeley voters again showed their support for our teachers by passing teacher pay increases along with recruitment and retention support. And we passed the largest facilities bond accompanied by the building maintenance tax, so there's a students and our staff could thrive in safe and beautiful buildings. We did that together. However, nothing could have prepared us for 2020. A global, once-in-a-lifetime, dare I say unprecedented pandemic triggered the closure of our schools, forcing our beloved children, teachers, staff, and families into Zoom and Google land. Board meetings shifted from in-person to Zoom board meetings, and district administrators were suddenly catapulted. Board members and administrators were suddenly catapulted into becoming public health experts. The election took place in the fall of 2020 during COVID, and two new board members, Directors Babbitt and Vasudev, were sworn in on Zoom. They've yet to experience a full board meeting in person. I look forward to being in the audience when that happens. The pandemic exposed health and education disparities in ways that could no longer be ignored by the general public. The health and educational outcomes of our families of color, particularly African American and Latinx, were and continue to be the most gravely impacted. This combined with racial tensions of police brutality against the Black and Brown community and the rise of anti-Asian hate across the country elevated the urgency for us to act locally. Oh, and remember the fires, the day that turned orange. Climate change is here, and we not only have to address air quality for fires, but we also now have to address it for COVID. But Berkeley came together in education and in community. And with the leadership of Director Brown, we passed and are implementing the Black Lives Matter resolution. With the leadership of Director Vasudev, we passed and are implementing the Latinx Resolution. With the leadership of Director Babbitt, we passed and are implementing the Climate Literacy Resolution. We take action. We don't just sit and watch what's happening around us. And it's with the steady leadership of Directors Alper and Brown, as they served as president during the time that we worked hard together to make hard, almost impossible decisions, while always finding room to celebrate our students. Our amazing partners, the Berkeley Public Schools Fund and the Berkeley School Volunteers stepped up in the most invaluable and unimaginable ways, distributing needed materials and equipment to students, helping to house our unhoused families, organizing onsite COVID testing, just to name a few things. With the help from our City of Berkeley partners, along with other community organizations, we leveraged our collective forces to meet as many needs of our students that we could. And finally, we reopened our classrooms in the fall of 2021 while also retaining remote school for students who needed it. It seemed like we were barely two steps ahead of the various COVID outbreaks. Meanwhile, we expanded support services in our schools. We kept the American Success Framework moving. We submitted a three-year LCAP and CSIS plan. We kept career tech plans, excuse me, career tech education programs and educator housing on track. And again, in the spring of 2022, we started another search for a new superintendent and successfully recruited and hired Dr. Anikia Ford-Morthell, which we are extremely appreciative and thankful and and pat ourselves on the back for a really good hire. I think I can safely say that this was a period where we and school boards across the nation were faced with challenges like no other. At the same time, our teachers, our staff, and our families face significant and daunting choices. Every single decision that we made on the dais had impacts, and I could only think about, you know, the empathy with every decision and what impact it would have on the families and students and the teachers and the staff and everybody that was involved. I urge the new board to glean lessons from what we discovered during COVID. Do not fall into institutional comfort, but instead challenge yourselves to address the academic and social emotional needs of our students in creative ways and keep families from diverse backgrounds at the forefront of our engagement. It is with great humility that I think thank each and every family that has entrusted the district with the education and care of their children. I couldn't be prouder to serve this district and to sit on this dais, virtual or real, with my board colleagues, past and present. I want to recognize and honor all the teachers, principals, staff, and administrators for the work they do day to day as they face any and all crises to educate and support our students. I want to thank all of the parents and guardians who serve on school site and district committees. You share with us your priceless evening hours to make our district better for all students. It is my greatest appreciation to the voters of Berkeley that they had the confidence to elect me to the school board in 2018. I also want to thank my family, who, as Director Brown said, or President Brown said, is like, put up with our or or give me the side eye for the time and the commitment that we 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 take seriously with the school board. People often say serving on a school board is a thankless job. Nothing can be further from the truth. Seeing the beaming face of a family as they watch their child do something new, hearing a student find their voice and advocate for themselves and or their fellow students, watching parents and guardians experience the power and strength of being active in their school community, seeing a teacher's passion as they lead their students in creative, interactive learning, feeling the pride that staff take in the work that they do, and experiencing the excitement of a child's joy in exploration and learning. That is what makes the serving on the school board a fully rewarding experience and one that I will miss. There's a constant tension between slow and steady change and the urgency to act now for the children of today. We don't have the luxury to be patient, especially when it comes to the educational outcomes of our African American, Latinx, EL, and special needs babies. My commitment to eliminating educational health and economic disparities started long before I was elected to the school board and will not end tonight. Only with the board, administrators, teachers, staff, parents, and guardians, and broader community members like me and Ty now, working together can we truly achieve excellence, equity, engagement, and enrichment for our children. I thank you all. I thank our community, and this will be a very special place for me always.
We love you, Julie. Ty, whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you, President Brown. There are two things that people hate elected when elected officials do, and that's one, thank each other, and two, congratulate themselves. We'll settle in. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to I want to thank some people. I want to reflect on a few things we've done and then close with some self-righteous words of wisdom for the continuing and and incoming board members. I want to start by thanking my first teacher, my mom, Lynn Alper, who is celebrating her 80th birthday today. My my mom, who was there when at my first board meeting in December of 2014 and is on Zoom tonight. She's been an educator her entire life, including a stint teaching math at Berkeley High, and she's been my guiding light on the board, the source of my devotion to public education and my inspiration for running for this position. I've been really lucky to have so many great teachers in my life, including many BUSD teachers, but she's the best there is. So, thank you, Mom. I love you and happy birthday. Now, my dad is great, too. Many of you know, many of you know Spike. He's been a mainstay volunteer recently at the adult school COVID testing location. He's an amazing person with his own career in public education, but it's not his birthday today, so he doesn't get as much airtime. But I love you too, Dad. Spouses of school board members get none of the glory, to the extent any of this is glorious. Honestly, I'm still waiting for that. But they share much of the aggravation. The President Brown alluded to this. They shoulder a lot more of the carpooling and doctor's appointments, and they get dragged to more district events and campaign events than anyone in their right mind would ever want to go to. Tamara has been unflailingly supportive at every step of the way, especially when it got really hard during COVID, and she is the smartest, most strategic person I know. Whatever success I've had in this role is due to her. And my kids, whose greatest frustration was when they would ask some question about why something in the district was the way it was, and I would say, I have no idea. And then they would say, well, aren't you on the school board? Or when they complain about something and about something, the way something was in the district, and I would politely suggest that maybe they run for school board. They love that. But of course, they put up with a lot, being the kids of school board members. There's not as many perks as you would think, and I love them very much and thank them for that. There's too little time to thank everyone, all the fellow parents, amazing students, devoted teachers, classified staff, administrators, union leaders, who've become good friends, sometimes adversaries, but more often friends and colleagues, and and they're the people who I'm going to miss working with so much. You you get elected to the board after having made all sorts of campaign promises and having all sorts of goals that you want to accomplish, and and then you just get hit with this tidal wave of issues that that to address that you don't have any control over, and that was hard to get used to. Two things I was committed to doing in my eight years on the board was overhauling the way we think about the most serious discipline issues in the district and changing our middle school assignment plan to ensure that our middle schools are integrated like all the other schools in the district. I'm really proud of the expulsion policy we developed after 18 months with hours and hours of meetings with stakeholders, representing advocates for victims of sexual harm, advocates for students who faced severe disciplinary action. It's a model policy that provides more protections for victims and more due process protections for students charged for disciplinary violations than any policy anywhere, and it's tangibly reduced our reliance on exclusionary discipline, which fell disproportionately on our students of color. And it's fitting, I guess, that tonight we have the second reading of the final administrative regulation related to the middle school assignment policy change, which I'm so thrilled about. I think Superintendent Ford-Morthell alluded to this. I think our most important job, honestly, is hiring, evaluating, and supporting our superintendent. I wasn't a part of the hiring of Donald Evans, who I was just, we didn't get to see him for some reason, but we got to hear him tonight. I was so excited to see his name on the on the on the list. But I got to serve with Dr. Evans for a number number of years, and as he kind of alluded to, weathered a number of storms with him. I've learned so much from him. He's now superintendent in the land of untold riches over in Piedmont, but I know in his heart, he'll always be a part of the Berkeley School District. The two most impactful, best decisions I was a part of on this board were hiring Brent Stevens and then Anikia Ford-Morthell as superintendents. I don't know if you all remember the novel coronavirus. But I actually do think people are going to forget what it was like to be a public school leader during COVID. And I'm convinced there was no better leader we could have had during that time than Brent Stevens. Being president of the board during that time was by far the greatest professional challenge I've ever experienced, and my day job is representing people facing the death penalty in Alabama, and I'm actually in Alabama now. Nothing I've experienced in that work compared to the pressure and the stress of managing a district of 10,000 students through an unprecedented and deadly pandemic. And I got a front row seat to Dr. Stevens' mastery of a role that he never asked for. I think every one of us is in his debt for his leadership during that time. And then we hired our current superintendent, who I am convinced is the best possible superintendent for Berkeley Unified, the perfect person for the moment we're in, and someone who I've already come to know as a brilliant educational leader, who has emotional intelligence, a palpable devotion to every one of our students, a true equity vision. She doesn't suffer fools. She means it when she talks about focusing on kid problems, not grown-up problems, and who I wish I got to serve with for more than just a few months. Somehow, I have a feeling we're going to be staying in touch, but she's a star, and you all better keep her here. Serious. Our my biggest failure, I think, is obvious, and it's the and Director Sinai, Julie talked about it, and that's the collective responsibility we all share. I mean, all of us, including our city and our community partners, for the fact that racial predictability still exists in a stark way in this district. Until you can no longer predict academic outcomes, disciplinary actions, and college and career readiness by looking at the color of a student's skin, none of us can be satisfied. That will remain the board's biggest challenge, and I think there's nobody better to continue attacking it than the five people who will be on this board next month, working alongside Superintendent Ford-Morthell and her outstanding team. I I want to say a few words of congratulations to our new board members and all the candidates in my board comment later tonight, but for now, I'll just say that I'm really excited to see what this new team will accomplish working together. Working on this team and the previous board I served with with amazing colleagues Karen Hemphill, Judy Appel, Josh Daniels, and Beatrice Leva-Cutler has been everything I I could have wanted, rewarding, challenging, educational, and often so much fun. One of the unexpected joys of the last few years has been meeting, getting to know, and then working so closely with Anna Vasudev, Director Vasudev. Anna is so smart. Anna is so smart, so experienced, so dedicated to serving students who often get overlooked, and I'm just so appreciative of her. I'm so grateful that we've gotten to become friends and colleagues, and I'm excited for, to see Anna, you continue to work on this team. Laura alluded to this. I've known and worked with Laura Babett for, I was gonna say 10 years, I think it might be 15. She and I were two of the inaugural members of the Parent Advisory Committee, and we spent many hours strategizing about how to advocate within the district, and then I joined the board, and my friend Laura became the parent delivering some harsh assessments of the district during public comment, and now we're colleagues on the board, and we've served the past year together on the policy committee. And, and as you said, Laura, while we don't always agree, we're always respectful to each other, and I so appreciate your willingness to call it like you see it, to ask the hard questions, and to, and to demand that we never stop treating our opportunity and achievement gaps as the crises that they are. I really admire that about you. Anna and Laura, and Julie mentioned this, Anna and Laura joined the board right in the middle of the pandemic, and I hope everyone appreciates how difficult that was. I'm really excited to see what they will do together on this board. Julie, she's the one you all are really gonna miss. I am constantly blown away by how knowledgeable, reasonable, strategic, eloquent, and committed Julie is. I remember when, when she, Khadija, and I were running for, running for school board, and we'd be at these campaign forums, and Julie would go first and would say something brilliant and eloquent, and Khadija and I would just look at each other and be like, "Man, how are we gonna follow that?" When I'm stuck on something, I literally often just ask myself what Julie would do, and, or I just call her and ask her what I should do. She, she is such a gift to this city. Thank you for everything, Julie. Khadija Brown, President Khadija Brown, let me move here. Well, the screen appears, I can see you as I read this. When I tell people how much I've learned from Khadija, they often say, "Really? She's four years younger than you. What does she have to teach you?" And it's true that even though I was a senior at Berkeley High when she was only a freshman, she's someone that I have come to rely on the last four years in so many ways I can't even begin to describe. As a teacher of adults, my colleagues and I sometimes debate the question whether it's possible to teach good judgment and, or whether that's an innate, instinctual thing. I tend to think the latter, actually, and that means that I'm always on the lookout for people with good judgment, whose instinctive assessments of complex situations are nuanced, thoughtful, strategic, compassionate, and turn out to be right. That's Khadija. It was easiest to see this during the complicated decisions we had to make during COVID, but I've seen and benefited from Khadija's judgment hundreds of times in all sorts of situations. And I wish you all could see what I've seen, because Khadija is a rare person whose outward talents are so obvious and apparent. Her public presence, the way she talks about teaching and learning with authority and experience and compassion. But those outward talents are matched by talents that tend only to reveal themselves in private conversations and sensitive confidential deliberations. I could go on and on about Khadija. I'll save it for when we're celebrating her inauguration as governor of California. And then president. I didn't forget about president, but I just think governor of California is like the, the good, you know, sensible next step. Okay. We're through the thanking people and reflecting on accomplishments portion of the speech. The only thing left is the self-righteous words of wisdom. So the only thing I really wanna say for the current and incoming board members is that what I, what I think is really hard to do, but really important to do in this job, is to be responsive to, but not reactive to, the community that you serve. And here's what I mean by that. I'm biased, but I think that the school board is the hardest form of elected office. It's hard because you're so close to your constituents. You see them every day. You see them at schools. You see them in the neighborhood at the grocery store. And the decisions you're making very tangibly, directly affect the most important people in their lives, their children. So when your friends and neighbors and fellow parents and people you bump into on the street call you and email you and come to public comment with legitimate and reasonable concerns, it's very hard to get in the habit of being responsive and ensure that the superintendent or the appropriate district staff member is aware of their concerns and that they're heard, while at the same time not jumping to try to fix their problem, when either it's not your role as a board member, or you don't have all the facts, or there are competing interests that you haven't heard from. And, and it's hard to do that, and it requires a thick skin, because especially when it comes to their children, people understandably don't have much patience. And part of being responsive but not reactive is being willing to disappoint people, people who voted for you, people whose kids are friends with your, with your kids, who run into you around town. And I was lucky enough to have been forced to learn this lesson at my very first meeting in December of 2014. This was before we were on Zoom, and we couldn't check email during the meetings. We were all up on the dais. And so when I got home after my first meeting, it was like midnight. I think Judy, yeah, Judy was president, and Judy, who I think is here, she's sort of a night owl, so it was probably like 1:00 AM. And I was, I was all wired, and I got home and I opened up my computer, and I saw dozens of emails on my BUSD account. And they came in these two distinct batches, and the first one were from parents at what was then called Jefferson School, and I had supported during that very first meeting an increase in the allocation of capital funds for their playground renovation, and it was the first motion I made as a board member, and it, and it prevailed in a three to two vote. And I went back today and I looked at some of the emails that I got that night. One of them had the subject line, "You are great!" exclamation point. And it said, "We voted for you after learning about some of your positions, and here we are one month later, and you really made a difference when it counted for something very important to our school." Another one had the subject line, all caps, "You rock." And, and the text of it said, "Just wanted to say a big thank you for your motion to fund the Jefferson Project. There are so many rejoicing emails zinging around our school community tonight." You get the point. I was riding high. I was thinking this school board stuff is easy. I'm the most popular politician in town. And then I, then I kept reading. Another issue we dealt with later, that same meeting, was about flex space, flexible rooms. We were having overcrowding issue in our elementary schools, and I'd been the one board member who said at that first meeting that I thought we should consider addressing our overcrowding by using some of those flexible rooms for classroom space. So this next batch of emails I got had very different subject lines. One was just disappointed, period. And, and the text of the email said, "We voted for you, and now we wish we hadn't." Another subject line was, "You're threatening the heart and soul of our school." And the text of the email said, "I know you're new to the board, but I hope you'll do your homework next time before you tear apart the fabric of our school community." And, and I'm not gonna name names, but, but I had to, well, I don't know if I had to, it was funny, but I, I looked back at some of those Jefferson emails, the ones saying how great I was. More than one of those people who wrote me those emails back in 2014 came to public comment during COVID, and let's just say their message was not exactly "You rock." All we can do is do our best. Use our best judgment, ask the best questions we can think to ask, trust the superintendent in whose hands we've placed the day-to-day operations of the district, and make sure that we're responsive to our community concerns without losing sight of our equity goals and our responsibility to all families and all students. That takes trust in ourselves and trust in each other. I'm confident the new team will build that trust and use it to take this district where we all need it to go. It's been a great honor to serve for eight years, and I'm very grateful to you all. Thank you.
That was absolutely beautiful. We love you, Ty and Julie. You are definitely going to be missed. You will forever be board members in our hearts, and we are very grateful that you will be our forever friend. At this time, we are going to move to public comment, and the celebration will, and the recognitions will continue. So I'm going to ask Ms. Charis if you can please promote former school board president Josh Daniels. Hello, former president Daniels, welcome.
Hello. Thank you for promoting me. Just wanted to say a few words about Julie and Ty, but before I do so, I wanna congratulate you, Khadija, and of course Jennifer and Mike, on your elections. I look forward to having you serve as board members and seeing what you can do for our kids. I think that Ty probably hacked my email, cuz he stole much of the things that I was gonna say, both about him and about Julie. You know, I don't even remember when I first met Julie. I mean, Julie, you've been involved in Berkeley for so long, and I think, you know, there's so many things to say about your contribution to, you know, our, our great city, and I say that as someone who grew up here, went to school here, lives here, now has kids here, you know, plans to stay here for a long time. The, the contribution you have made throughout your career, you know, to improve Berkeley, I mean, all aspects, the city, the school district, has just been tremendous. I don't, I don't know anyone who has given as much as you have to the improvement, you know, of our community. And as Ty mentioned, when he was going through his, his long-winded speech, you know, the, your, your knowledge base and your sense of how to get things done, and how to do that both, you know, at, at the staff level, on the city side, of course, your work with Lifelong, and, you know, on the school board, was, has been invaluable, and I say that as, you know, a former colleague of yours. I say that now as a parent of two kids, you know, in BUSD, I say that as a, you know, Berkeley resident. And, you know, as a former board member, you know, one of the things we always ask ourselves is, you know, did we make a difference for kids? And, you know, 110%, you have. You know, even, even, you know, in both stints on the board. And, you know, as, as someone who is interested and continues to be interested in what, you know, the district is doing, you know, it is definitely, you know, a loss for, you know, me and my family and the whole community, you know, to have you a step away, but I just, I, I hope that you can feel proud about what you did, even if, you know, I think, I think we even have talked about this, like, being on the board is such a isolating, or can be such an isolating experience, and it's hard to sort of maintain that sense of understanding about your accomplishments, and I hope, whether it's now or in a week or in a year, you're able to understand the profound difference you made in such a positive way for so many kids. I mean, you mentioned quite a bit of, of that, you know, in your, in your talk, but I just, I wanna echo it as someone who has, you know, shared a seat with you. So thank you for all you've done, and I'm sure I'll see you around. And Ty, I, you know, I wanna congratulate you on being the second Berkeley High alumni to serve on the Berkeley School Board. It's very, very impressive. And, you know, when I was, when we overlapped for four years, you know, you were the one that I would often call to think through things and to strategize, and, you know, your approach to issues and your understanding of how, you know, to just think about complex issues that, you know, sometimes there's no good choice. You're just choosing between, you know, bad options. I think, were certainly taught me and made me a better board member. You know, I was actually thinking about, you know, to just, I, I was gonna highlight the expulsion policy that you wrote, because that was a huge lift, and it's often difficult to find ways for a single board member to really influence a particular area of the district, and, you know, that one immediately came to mind. I, you know, I work in education all the time, and I reference back to that, you know, frequently, and I think when, when, you know, you can, you can finish your term knowing that, like, for, you know, for many, many, many kids, you improve their experience within BUSD, you know, in part because of the changes that you, that you did, and you didn't just do it sort of in a top-down way. You did it in a way that was collaborative and thoughtful and meaningful and, you know, engaging of all stakeholders, and that, that's, that's not easy to do. You know, and, and I just wanna, you know, the way that you reflected back on that 2014, you know, meeting, I think, shows the, the way in which you understand the nuances of being a board member, and just like Julie, I hope you can, whether it's today or a week or a year, you know, feel really proud of your impact and accomplishments, and, you know, the benefit that you have given to so many BUSD kids. So I just wanna thank you both, and I'll see you both around.
Thank you so much, Josh. Next, we will hear from former school board president Judy Appen.
Hi, Judy. Welcome. Yes. So, as Khadija mentioned, my name's Judy Appel, and I'm a former board director. And I just wanna start by thanking both, both of you, both Ty and Julie, for your deep support, both personal and publicly. After Allison, my wife and I were hit by a vehicle three years ago. You know, we really, we were seriously injured, and you both were just really, really present during that time. I mean, everybody was, but I wanted to specifically call that out, and that you two, and I just was listening to some old testimony to prepare for this, and I heard, like, Julie, like, right after my accident, like, mentioned it at the board meeting a couple of times. So I just, I really appreciate your holding us so close, and, you know, it means a lot to me personally, as well as it did professionally. I also wanna let you both know how inspiring it was to serve with both of you, and how, what amazing leaders I've found both of you to be, and I kinda wanna, like, reiterate a lot of what Josh just said. I think serving with you both made me a better board member and better, better able to serve the community, and I just think that's all of our goals, so it's really, it was really great. So, Ty, I wanna start with you. So I think it was 2014 when you were elected. And so we served on the board together for quite a few years, and you also do death penalty work, which my wife did until she recently retired. So we had a lot of, like, commonalities in our lives and a lot of connections. Also, you know, as I think Josh just mentioned, you're a product of the BUSD schools, which I think made a really big difference on the board. And so it was really a pleasure to serve with you for so many years. I learned a lot from you, and I also just, like, had a lot of fun with you. I think you will, I think both in your school board work and in your life's work, you're so deeply committed to equity and justice, and you've done such great work, and a lot of people have talked about specific things you've done, but there's actually just so much more. Actually, with both of you, there's so much more on, on serving on the board, so I just, I just really wanna recognize how valuable you've been. And Julie, I wanted to say that I worked with you closely even before we appointed you to the board to fill a vacancy in 2013, which you served until 2014. And I really think that your deep commission, commitment to education was in part what made Ed Tom Bates, when you were working for him, kind of be seen as the education mayor, and so you came onto the board at that time, and then again in 2018, with a lot of passion regarding equity and a deep, deep knowledge of process and serving on, like, serving on an elected board, body. So that was really, really helpful. And so, you know, I'm, I'm very, I've been very happy to support you. I'm sorry that I missed, you know, when you first came back on, pretty soon after that, I was out because I, you know, I had the accident, and then I was off the board. But, you know, I've been really, really, really impressed with your commitment, commitment to education all of these years, and I think, as Josh was saying, to the city of Berkeley. So, thank you both so much, and I don't know, it's, I, I look forward to seeing you after you serve. It's, you know what? So I got off the board a couple of years ago, and it does feel like it's a really big thing while it's happening, and then there's, you know, that, it's, it's hard, but it's also, like, you have a lot more time, so look forward to that.
I'm sure they are looking forward to having a lot more time. Next, we will hear from former president Beatrice Slava Cutler. Hi, Beatrice, welcome.
So I just wanted to, hi, hello, everyone. Just wanted to take a moment to join my colleagues and to thank the board, board member Ty Alpert and Julie Sinead for their leadership, their focus on students, and making Berkeley Unified a better place each term that they serve. Both were holding down very much full-time jobs, balancing family, children, and home, and being on a school board to top it off. Yeah, it is more than 10 hours. It's more than just an elected deposition. It's a true commitment. You each have to, to a vision that all children and youth deserve to be successful in school, and that all families will be welcomed, and teachers and staff will be supported in their work. Both of you have demonstrated over these years your sincere commitment to making things better, improving educational experiences, and providing Berkeley students a quality, equitable education and quality workplace for our teachers and staff. I enjoyed my years when we served together, because even when we disagreed, we'd look for ways to get to the same goal that I know we all shared. We had last, we dig. We had laughs, we dig deep to find solutions and we built off each other's ideas, suggestions and thinking. It was always a team effort. And we found that even in our differences, there is appreciation for each other's values, perspective and experiences. Julie, you and I go way back to when your eldest Joseph was two years old in diapers. And now he's this young married man. And tears us now an adult, working, young woman, both attended by year. And thank you for your friendship, your camaraderie, all through United in Action, the work that we did there with the city of Berkeley and with our teachers and our faculty. And, you know, everybody in the community that came out to support United in Action and the 2020 vision. I know we'll stay in touch. We got a lifelong relationship because I'm going to wait for your grandchildren to come to Central either. Ty, I hope on the new board, they will have someone who can find humor in the work. We had many laughs and that really helped us. With you and Josh Daniels, there was always, there wasn't a board meeting that we didn't laugh or joke. And still we managed to get through the board meeting and end by 11 o'clock. Thank you for bringing lightness to such serious and heavy meetings and times. One thing we definitely improved on, you and I, was the length and structure of board meetings. Gone are the 1:00 AM meetings. That was dreadful. Thank you Ty and Julie and to the new incoming board coming in December and to Anna and to Laura and to Khadijah. You're all going to do great. I'm wishing you healthy camaraderie, best thinking and sending you all and the superintendent good energy your way. You got this. Sí se puede. Julie and Ty, enjoy the extra hours. Gracias.
Thank you Beatrice. At next, we will hear from a city auditor Jenny Wong, followed by school board director elect Jennifer Shemaski.
President Brown, can you say who the next speaker is again? I'm sorry.
Yes, we will hear from Jenny Wong, city auditor, followed by Jennifer Shemaski. And we have our one-minute timer on, so we will pay attention to that. Ms. Charis, whenever you get an opportunity, please unmute Jenny Wong. Thank you.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Welcome.
We need to audit your Zoom skills, auditor Wong.
Thank you so much. And congratulations also to President Brown and hello to Vice President Babett and Director Vasu Daye and Superintendent Formore Thel. First, I wanted to just say to Ty, yes, you can audit my Zoom skills. Welcome that. You'll have extra time. Thank you so much for your mentorship and friendship. More importantly, I just want to thank you for your incredible work using your social justice background to achieve some incredible progress at BUSD. As a fellow Rosa Parks parent, I also saw your genuine care for each person. You translated your role, that translated into role as your director in securing funding in EGH. And as an auditor, I appreciated your leadership on accountability and budgeting issues. I don't know how you do it, but you make everything look easy. And Julie, I just wanted to thank you for being an advocate for all students, especially the most vulnerable. Your ability to achieve so much in problem solving, diving deep into issues. It's been a tremendous asset. I've appreciated our collaborations and appreciate you always fighting for students during such a tough time navigating the pandemic, superintendent search and all the while you led with empathy, considering the needs of Berkeley families and continued commitment to equity. I admire both of you and have so much love for both of you. Knowing that you were both on the board helped me sleep better at night. I'm so lucky. My children and thousands of other Berkeley students benefited from both of your leadership. And I just look forward to seeing you on a future Wednesday night outside of board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Jenny. Next, we will go to Jennifer Shemaski, followed by school board director elect Mike Chang.
I think you can all hear me. Hi, good evening.
Yes.
Thank you Julie and Ty for your many years of dedication to our kids, our communities and our beloved Berkeley schools. Your leadership, calm thoughtfulness and balanced approach, especially in the midst of a global pandemic, has been so inspiring and has made such a difference for me, for my kids and so many others in our community. Personally, I want to express my sincere gratitude for your support, your friendship and all those promises to help continuing that support and advising the new board members in our work. I'm really sorry that I won't have the opportunity to serve beside you, but I promise to work really hard to make you as proud of me as I am proud of you. So thank you. And I'm done before a minute.
Good job. You're already starting off great. Good job, Jennifer. At next, we will hear from Mike Chang, followed by Kathy Campbell. Hi Mike, welcome.
Hi there. Was I muted the whole time?
Yes, you were.
Okay, okay, here we go. Thank you so much. Good evening, board members, and thank you for your service. Director Alfred and Sinai Directors, thank you so much for your many years of dedicated service to BUSD and your friendship and mentorship. You stepped up during a global pandemic and thank you for taking the hits. The even-handed and constructive approach that both of you bring to the board was critical to moving the district through very choppy waters. Your focus on equity, inclusion and access is something that I will model and practice as an incoming director. We have big shoes to fill and I hope that I can get you on the horn for future council. Thanks again and please do take a well-earned rest. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we will hear from Kathy Campbell, followed by Tamara Todd. Hi Kathy.
Okay, great. Now everybody can hear me. So I'm Kathy Campbell and I had the great privilege and honor to be the president of the Berkeley Federation of teachers for 12 years. And part of that great honor was to work closely with Ty and Julie. And I'm just here tonight to express my personal thanks for your service and also my thanks for all the support you provided to our teachers during your tenure. I want to just say three short things. One is that I really want to thank you for your respect for unions and your understanding that powerful partnerships with unions could make life better for our students and families. I want to thank you for handling probably the most difficult years in board history with grace, dignity, professionalism and a constant desire to listen to each other and to work as one board, not a collection of individuals. And lastly, I just want to say in many of the ways that have been described tonight, you've moved the moral arc towards justice in our community and we really appreciate you and we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. At next, we will hear from Tamara Todd, followed by BWI CINA.
Hi, I'm Tamara, Ty's wife, and these are Ty's sons, Casey and Owen. And if there's one thing he's taught us in eight years on the board, it's that public comment should be short. So we'll be, we'll be to the point. But we wanted to come on and want to congratulate Ty on finishing eight years and say that we're so proud of the work you did. One thing that's really special about Ty is that he brings people in and props them up and includes everybody, connects everybody in everything he does, and that includes us. And so we were along from this ride, from the really fun parts of canvassing and running elections to the really hard parts of the pandemic. But we appreciated how he included us and everything we learned along the way.
Yeah, and I want to say it was really fun working on the campaigns with you and going door-to-door with you when you were running. And I'm really proud of you.
Yeah, and even Owen, as a little six-year-old stamped every address on the envelope and got to eat breakfast with Dr. Evans once a week for several years. So thank you for including us. We're proud of everything we did. And we were witness to your thousands of hours of service to the community.
That was beautiful. At next, we will have BWI students, followed by Hasmi.
President Brown, I'm not sure if Bruce, yeah, okay.
Are you able to speak for Mike Bruce?
Well, I think, I think, President Brown, I think he's, her later, so I think you should probably go to Hasmi.
Okay. Hasmi, when I hear you.
Do you think I'm going to say nice things about you guys?
10 minutes.
Excellent. Yeah, that one-minute timer is not going to work for me, but I will do my best. My name is Hasmi Manassian and I'm a teacher leader of the Universal Ninth Grade at Berkeley High School, as well as an ethnic studies and social living teacher in the Growth Hive. Though I've spoken many times to this board, I'm calling in tonight for the sole purpose of offering my sincere gratitude and congratulations to Director Alfred for his eight years of service on the Berkeley Unified School Board. Your first night high on the school board was December 10th, 2014. I'm sure I was there. Dr. Evans closed schools the next day because they anticipated severe weather, which I hope you didn't take personally. We weren't talking about you per se. I mean, clearly you didn't take it personally because you came back for 223 more meetings after that. And we are so glad that you did. Ty, your first day was also the same day Berkeley High students staged a whole school peaceful demonstration in support of Michael Brown in Ferguson and Eric Garner in Staten Island. It was a beautiful day. You have shepherded this school district through multiple superintendent transitions, new sexual harassment policies, anti-racism work, name change processes, immigration resolutions, facilities expansions, tennis court gate, labor negotiations, a school assignment process, global pandemic, and most importantly to me, the launch of the Universal Ninth Grade Program at Berkeley High. We are grateful for your calm wisdom, your authentic thought partnership and your ability to view schools as a Rubik's Cube system, helping us see which colors emerge when you shift one row, what you gain, also what you lose and ultimately how it all comes together. Thank you Ty for your humor, your steadfast commitment to our core values and the shortest board member public comments in the history of this board. Though I know we're in good hands without you, your presence on the dais will be felt. And also I'm wondering if you want to hang out in two Wednesdays. Also Julie, I want to say that my, my remarks were prepared for Ty tonight because I can't imagine you not on this board. I was thinking back to 2013. I was like, wait, Julie's leaving. Like I, you've been here for so long. I know you came and then you left again. But I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, the one thing that I am, two things I'm really grateful for, for you. One is that the, the, your public health knowledge helped us survive and thrive in the global pandemic. We were not struggling and you said it kept us two steps ahead and that was all you. And most people were two steps behind. And the, you know, it was, it was really thanks to you and your leadership around the pandemic that we were able to continue teaching. I want to thank you for joining in U9's first year and really having our backs. And I really want to thank you for the fire science program because my son, who previously really looked up to Ty and wanted to be a lawyer, now really wants to be a firefighter. Thanks to you and the lovely CTE program. So anyway, my hats off to both of you. Congratulations and we will miss you.
Thank you so much, Hasmi. Next, we will go to student Eva Levinson. And I apologize for missing you earlier, followed by Megan.
Good evening, board and school, I mean, good evening, board and superintendent. My name is Eva Levinson. I'm a freshman at VHS. I'm here to urge you to move as quickly as possible to implement the use of the structure, of a structured literacy curriculum for all elementary school students. My older brother and I both have dyslexia and you heard our stories at the earlier board meeting. I got outside help and was able to read above grade level by fifth grade, but only because we could afford a tutor. Other kids, like my brother, didn't get that chance. Please do everything you can to improve teaching instruction in our elementary schools. Every kid, every kid deserves the best science-based reading help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well. Next, we will move to Megan, followed by Megan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Megan Potente. I'm co-state director for Decoding Dyslexia California. And during the October meeting, several school board members shared concerns with BUSD's core curriculum, the units of study and reading. And several things were discussed about the units of study, including the fact that many years of data do not show literacy improvement. Questions were asked as to what would trigger a curriculum audit. What you should know from the Literacy Improvement Plan settlement agreed to in 2020 and will, that which will be discussed today is that the settlement agreement has in it a requirement for a curriculum review. It was disturbing that when you asked questions of BUSD staff in the October meeting on this topic, no one mentioned that the units of study curriculum review was a requirement of the settlement. And in tonight's outside court monitor report, it states on page nine that BUSD is in fact past due on the audit and review of its core reading curricula. The units of study curriculum is based on a debunked theory of reading instruction called three-queuing. I encourage you to listen to a recent APM report, Sold a Story Podcast Series, which exposes the problem and by the way, also includes testimony from BUSD parents. We urge you to stop investing in the units of study immediately and complete the required curriculum audit. Thank you.
Thank you as well. At next, we will go to Katie Reese, followed by Lindsay Nofield.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Katie Reese. I am also here in regards to the literacy improvement plan. Here overcoming my immense Zoom anxiety to speak to you tonight as a concerned parent of three Berkeley schoolchildren and also an experienced teacher and literacy specialist. I've also previewed tonight's report and I'm disappointed that no progress has been made on the audit of our core reading program since the last report. We continue to use Lucy Calkins' Reading and Writing Workshop. And this is a flawed, inequitable program that lacks not only a solid phonics component, but also neglects sufficient exposure to complex text and vocabulary development as required by Common Core standards. It also doesn't provide adequate scaffolding for English language learners and students with learning differences. In my current work as a high school reading interventionist, I support ninth and 10th grade students who struggle to act. I support ninth and 10th grade students who struggle to access grade-level content because their reading skills are low. Even at age 14 and 15, they're having to spend too much mental energy on the work of figuring out what the words say, which leaves them little capacity for building fluency and comprehension, and more importantly, renders them frustrated and disengaged. These students are casualties of this workshop model that we are using. I just need 60 more seconds. There are many factors that contribute to reading struggles, but a weak core curriculum in the early grades shouldn't be one of them. We need an evidence-based reading program in place to fulfill the larger goals of the Literacy Improvement Plan. The good news is that BUSD doesn't have to start from scratch or do this work alone. Districts across the country, including our neighbors in Oakland Unified and others throughout California, have thrown out the Calkins model already and are bravely shifting their reading programs to align with research. Excellent, and even free professional development is widely available to get our teachers and principals up to speed. This moment is not the swinging of a pendulum. It's an inflection point, a moment of national reckoning, the cumulative effect of decades of research by experts. And if you're not aware of this research, I would be really happy to personally provide you with resources. Please don't let Berkeley be the last one to make these important changes to our reading program. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Lindsay Nofelt, followed by Lori DePaul.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Lindsay. Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Okay. I'll show you my hat and my headphones now.
That's a cool hat.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Nofelt, and I'm speaking as a parent of children in this district. Tonight, as you listen to George Ellis present his report on the progress made toward improving literacy instruction in Berkeley, I'd like you to keep a couple of things in mind to frame the discussion. Number one, how can we emphasize a no-shame zone for this work? We need to make it safe for all teachers and administrators to say, "I have unfinished learning about literacy." And we can bring the needed empathy and support to our beloved educators when we frame it in this way. Second, can we acknowledge that even if there is no one perfect curriculum, that a new curriculum still serves as a counter, a cornerstone of professional learning? And curriculum implementation is a natural, powerful opportunity for job-embedded learning on reading research. No matter how you slice it, this is the right time to demonstrate that Berkeley prioritizes literacy. The awareness of reading science along with available curriculums that truly align to those practices means that we could see improved outcomes almost immediately, just like our neighbors at Nice Room Elementary. They have referred 12% fewer students K through six into intervention after a single year of a science-based curriculum. That's amazing savings for us. This investment is worth it. Reading is a foundational skill that unlocks the mysteries of math, of science, history, culture, understanding others, and more. We said earlier at the beginning of this meeting that the rest of the nation follows what Berkeley does. Well, let's let them follow us. In this, we can do it, Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Lindsay. Next, we will have Lori DePaul, followed by Rachel Lee. Ms. Charles, can you please promote Lori? Hi, Lori. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Great. Hi, I'm Lori DePaul, co-state director of Decoding Dyslexia California. My comments are on item 14.2, the Court Monitor Report being presented tonight on the Literacy Improvement Plan as part of the Dyslexia Settlement. We had expected to see universal screening data at least at a district level by grade, if not at a school level tonight. The reason you have invested and implemented in a reading data system is that you now have easy access to these reports. Why is this data not being presented to you and to BUSD parents? How can you measure reading progress, especially at the early K through two grades, without data? We ask that you please request this reading systems data and that it be timely shared each fall, winter, and spring screening. We were also assured in the October meeting that parents and caregivers would be given reports on the fall universal screening data for their child at their upcoming parent-teacher conferences. We have since learned that parents were not provided these reports, and parents were told by BUSD to not provide them unless they were specifically asked for. This is unacceptable to exclude parents and caregivers in meaningful data reports about their child's progress or lack thereof. We are requesting that parents automatically be provided access to their child's past fall and upcoming winter universal screening reports. Lastly, Wilson Reading Systems was the only reading intervention mentioned in the Court Monitor Report. Yet this is a tier-three intervention for grades two through 12 only. What is BUSD doing for reading interventions in the critical grades of K through one in tier two and tier three? What is it using for tier two in grades two and above? Please help us in getting answers to these critical questions. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Rachel Lee, followed by our last public commenter for the evening, Rachel Alper.
Good evening, everybody. I'm speaking to you tonight as an engaged parent of two kids in BUSD. I have two points to make this evening. The first is pertaining to the requirement of the Brown Act that school board meetings are open and transparent. Part of the transparency is for the members of the public to know who else is quote-unquote "in the room" at a public meeting. Knowing who else is there, who cares about what issues, and the ability to communicate with other members of the public are vital components of citizenship participation and community building. It is also critical to ensure government accountability. These school board meetings have been 100% virtual for almost three years. I'm requesting that you change the settings of the Zoom meetings to allow participants to see who else is in the meeting and communicate with each other, and come up with a timeline to go hybrid with the directors in person and the public having the option to attend in person but still be able to view the meeting and make comments virtually. My second comment is pertaining to the need of a coherent system of assessment data across all sides, provided to caregivers voluntarily so that caregivers know how their kids are doing at any given point in time with respect to especially literacy and math. Parents are left to fend for themselves when it comes to figuring out which assessments are given, what assessments are part of which lawsuits and what is not, what the assessments are assessing, and how to interpret these results. It's just too much. In many cases, caregivers are not provided the results and are required to ask for them. But that requires caregivers to know what to ask for. Without this information at their fingertips explained, families do not know whether their children are at risk, and delays to knowing can lead to dire outcomes, especially for our most marginalized kids who do not have the ability to counteract the effects of delay with intensive tutoring and other private supplementation. Caregivers have a right to this information. Thank you.
My last public commenter for the evening, we will have Rachel Alper.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Alper, and I'm Ty's daughter. I want to congratulate him on eight years of service on the school board. I learned to love politics and local campaigns when my dad first ran when I was 12 years old. I have learned so much about public service through watching him and talking about him, talking with him about his work on the board. I have found his work inspiring as I think about my interests and my future career goals, and I love him very much. Thank you.
I was trying to press unmute a billion times, but I agree with you, Ty. I think we should all say, "Aww." That was beautiful, Rachel. At this time, this concludes our public commenters, our public commenting period for the board. I do want to make an announcement to the community that we were in a very giving spirit tonight, and so we gave extra minutes for public comments because this occasion is so important. And we thought it was important to hear from all of our public commenters. However, community, full transparency, please govern yourselves according to the one minute or the two minutes that will be provided during the next board meeting, public, during the next public comment time during our board meeting. Don't want you to have any surprises when we go back to our strict one minute. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our committee comments. Are there any committee comments this evening? Seeing none, we will now move to union comments. And I believe we have a video from the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Ms. Charles, whenever you're ready.
There's comments.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think the PAC has a video.
I will be sharing white and green. Yeah, just a second.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll receive the video from the PAC, and then we will move to union comments.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Nofelt, and I'm here as co-chair of the Parent Advisory Committee to give the Board of Education an update on what our committee is doing. This is the first of monthly updates you'll receive. The California Department of Education, the CDE, informs districts that the purpose of the Parent Advisory Committee, the PAC, on the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, is to meaningfully engage in an annual, ongoing process that incorporates collected feedback into the LCAP, resulting in continuous improvement through an equity lens. Our central mission as this parent committee is to safeguard the vulnerable and achieve good results for all kids. Research shows that effective family engagement can contribute to improved student outcomes and to closing persistent achievement gaps among students of different racial and ethnic backgrounds and family income levels. In Berkeley, we have an explicit PAC goal to provide an opinion on whether or not the LCAP improves outcomes for prioritized students, which in this district includes Black and Latinx students, those who qualify for free and reduced lunch, English learners, and homeless and foster youth. This is our job, and one we take seriously. On November 10th, after new representatives had been invited to join and were assigned to the committee by principals, the PAC had our first meeting of the 2022-23 school year. We introduced ourselves and the seasons of the LCAP process. In the fall, we educate. Winter is for review. In the spring, we'll engage and provide feedback while the summer is for reflection. This season of engagement aligns well with the CDE-recommended four-phase continuous improvement process: plan, do, reflect, and adjust. In that spirit, we used our meeting as a planning session to set each other up for success in the next stage of the LCAP plan cycle. We brainstormed ways to work together most effectively and agreed to, one, stay rooted in our kids. Our shared mission is to improve learning outcomes. Two, create spaces for multiple truths and norms. Three, be brave and ask questions. Four, connect emotionally and allow each other to bond and embrace different perspectives and backgrounds. Five, hold time at each meeting for reports from school reps in order to consciously share information relating to the LCAP actions and goals. And six, be willing to work outside of meetings to get things done. We also made plans to share relevant clips of board meetings to avoid duplicative presentations, create intentional space for providing input on budget priorities, use strategic focus to map community concerns to the LCAP, and foster community through meetups and a mix of in-person/hybrid/Zoom meetings. We also introduced a new fantastic progress monitoring tool built by the Categorical and Special Projects Department that provides a more complete picture of the 64 actions that make up the 2023 LCAP. This provides a one-stop shop for members to view the purpose, funding, and data as it relates to each action. Our members are reviewing the document in the next few weeks and coming to our next meeting with one to two questions. At our December 8th meeting, we will continue the planning process and identify subjects that we need deeper dives into with guest speakers. The PAC membership changes annually, and our goal is to have a group that represents various perspectives and needs, including different racial, ethnic, linguistic, cultural, and religious backgrounds, and different gender identities, sexual orientations, family structures, and abilities or special needs. Our goal, made more difficult by burnout, is to encompass at least one active member from each school site. We are currently seeking members from Silvia Mendez, Early Childhood Education, Longfellow, Berkeley High, and Berkeley Tech. If you or someone you know might be interested in contributing to our friendly and active committee, please reach out to your principal, another PAC member, or Lisa Estupen, the Director of Special Projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well for the PAC comments. Now, we will receive our union comments from the Berkeley Federation of Teachers.
Hello, Berkeley Unified School Board and Superintendent Ford Mortfeld. I am Matt Meyer, president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. First off, congratulations to President Brown and future directors Chang and Shinoski for taking on leadership roles in our district. We believe that under your future governance, our district will continue to succeed and improve. I wanted to take some time and thank board directors Ty Alper and Julie Sinai for their service on the Berkeley School Board. Both of you have dedicated years of your time working to make our district successful. Julie, I have appreciated your advocacy and attention to detail for the staff housing project, which is now on its way. Without your continued support, this project would not be where it is today. Also, your support of STEM programs in our district has moved us from being a STEM-deficient district, one that we can really be proud of. Our CTE programs have expanded dramatically at both the high school and middle schools due to your expertise. Your work with facilities is also so important. It is often forgotten, but our buildings are the environment that our students are learning in. Our buildings are now CTE-ready. You've always dedicated time to making sure that this environment is one where students can thrive. Ty, I feel like so much has happened in the eight years you have served on the board. That is a lot of Wednesday nights. Our Restorative Justice Program and student discipline procedures have come such a long way due to your commitment to change. Our language has shifted around discipline. We have tools and even a matrix to help make sure that behaviors are corrected rather than just removing a student from school. You brought in your civil rights background and applied it to our systems. In the policy subcommittee meetings, I can see your legal mind at work. You look at each policy line by line, thinking about the intended and unintended consequences. You don't just ask great questions, but are always thinking about approaches to reach consensus. I see this way of thinking at board meetings as well. You've been able to tackle large, complex issues. Some people would steer clear of tough topics. You would bring people together and... You would bring people together and really hear their concerns. You had a unique ability to find common threads and move a project forward. This was evident in creating a single TWI school and rethinking our middle school assignment system. Both of you care deeply about our educators and our students. You're both instrumental in getting important parcel taxes and bond measures passed in our district. You both worked tirelessly on the campaigns themselves, doing the actual work to ensure success, and we were successful. Our community values our public schools and your leadership. Our educators feel heard. Our students have benefited from the work you have done. I'm not sure what is next, but I'm sure both of you will transform whatever project you take on. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Matt Meyer. I don't believe we have any other union comments. And I know our board members probably offered their comments that they're going to offer tonight, but just to, for good measure, I'll go back around for board member comments. If you have any comments, board members, just go ahead and feel free to unmute yourself. I'm texting.
No, no.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I want to... Ms. Charis, can you... Can you... Is he still there? Bruce Wasinus. Francisco's... Francisco, what happened to Bruce?
He should be there. Like, I...
He was there earlier. B. It was B. Wasinus.
He's still there. It's BWI.
I can't locate him. Bruce, can you raise your hand? Do you mind raising your hand if you can?
He's not in there anymore.
Yeah, he's not in there anymore. Well... Does anyone else have any comments? Can I go after anybody else? I don't know if anybody else is anywhere.
I actually don't think anyone else has comments, Ty. So, would you like to go ahead? Or do you want to just come around for a second opportunity?
No, I will. I want to... Bruce can watch it, watch later. But I... Francisco and I both wanted to make sure that we honored Bruce Wasinus for his, really, almost three decades of commitment to student diversity in the Berkeley Unified School District. He... Many people don't know his name. They don't know who he is. But he's the person who has written the student assignment software for our elementary school assignment plan, our sort of groundbreaking model student assignment plan at the elementary school level. He's also written the software code to create the three-zone middle school plan. I've spent hours with Bruce over the years that we've been talking about this, but Francisco has probably spent hundreds of hours with him. And again, people don't... People, we don't talk about him much publicly. So, we wanted to make sure that we called him out as someone who was really integral to the creation of this new middle school assignment policy. And we wanted to thank him for all the many different middle school modeling scenarios he developed. He's the person behind all of the maps that we've seen over the past two years. And we've only seen a tiny fraction of all of the maps he had to develop to get us to the point where we had the maps that we've seen and ultimately will use. So, I want to express my gratitude for all of Bruce's work behind the scenes on behalf of all Berkeley students. And I wanted to give Mr. Martinez an opportunity, if there's anything you wanted to say as well.
You, like everybody said, you take my thunder many times. So, I just wanted to thank Bruce. I mean, Bruce and I talk all the time. Like, and sometimes I feel like I bother him when I tell him, like, I want something else in the map or like that we need to change the colors of the map. Or... And, but I do know that he deeply cares about it, and he's always very responsive. One of the things about Bruce is he does this on the side. This is not his real job. He has, like, another job. He's a programmer someplace else. And then he does this at night sometimes. I talk to him, and then at 1:00 in the morning, I get a bunch of maps that the next day I need to review and then get back to him, like, the following day. So, I just wanted to really, really thank him. Bruce and I have worked on this for the past, like, 23 years. So, I have known him for a couple of years. So, Bruce, thank you so much for everything that you do for the Berkeley kids.
And Francisco, I'm sure you'll agree with me that he would want us to mention, too, that he is sort of a historian and chronicler of the district's efforts to integrate its schools going back three decades and has sort of amassed an archive that preserves that really interesting and rich and important history. So, he's a really fascinating, important person in our district. And thank you, President Brown and Superintendent Ford Mortell, for giving us the opportunity to thank him publicly.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Alper, and thank you, Francisco, for your kind words to Bruce. On behalf of the Board of Education, we say ditto and echo all of your sentiments in appreciating Bruce for all the work that he's done in BUSD. At this time, I don't believe...
President Brown, can I just add one more thing? That I think is really important people know about Bruce's historic work with us. It's really his work with Francisco that has held up our assignment plan in court. You know, whenever it gets challenged, it's like the work that Ian Francisco do are what has the integrity where we can be able to not only succeed in our own court cases, but be a model for other districts that are trying to do the same thing. So, he really has been instrumental. And the work together, again, with you, Francisco, has just been instrumental, you know, for the district and for our assignment policies.
Absolutely, Julie. Thank you so much for that addition. At this time, we will continue on with our agenda, and we will move to approve the consent calendar. Is there motion to approve this evening's consent calendar?
A motion to approve?
It's been moved by Director Babbitt. Is there a second?
A second? I was trying to give, you know, Ty and Julie that last time, but...
I was gonna let Student Director Siegel second because I feel like he hasn't seconded or made enough motions, but oh, well.
Okay, well, it has been seconded by Laura and then Ty and also Ian. Please, Ms. Charis, can you please call her on?
Director Siegel.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes, absolutely. At this time, we will go ahead and move to our agenda items that are put on the agenda for discussion. And we will begin with our first agenda item this evening on BSEP, and I will turn it over to our superintendent, Superintendent D. G. Ford Mortell, for the introduction of this item.
Thank you, President Brown. Presenting on this item is our Director of BSEP, Denvera, Ms. Kathy Fleming.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Fleming, and I am the Director of Local Resources and Partnerships here at Berkeley Unified. I'd like to pause and say congratulations, Directors Alper and Sinai, on your retirement. I wish you well in what you're doing next, and I hope our paths cross at some point to do work together. Okay, and... It's waiting for the PowerPoint.
I hear there's a ballot measure possibly coming up.
Yes, they're actually in two years. So, that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. And I think we're trying to get the slide deck up. Lysanna?
Yes, Director. I am switching devices just this time.
Okay. I will read the first slide verbiage just to get it something going. So, good evening, directors. As I said, my name is Kathy Fleming, and we are here tonight to present a higher-level outline of the process and timeline to develop and approve a measure for the renewal of the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program. And thank you for your patience, everyone. Appreciate you hanging in there with us.
That's no problem at all, Kathy. Thank you for your patience as well. And we're excited to finally receive your presentation. So, go right ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, so I'm on the next slide, Slide 2. And there are many ways that BSEP contributes directly to achieving our mission, which is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to our world. BSEP also helps us realize our four E's: excellence, equity, engagement, and achievement. The intention of the presentation tonight is to share with the board and the public the work ahead toward the BSEP renewal, including information on the current BSEP measure, a timeline for BSEP renewal, and the activities and roles for key stakeholders in the measure development process. Next slide, please. BSEP, the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program, is a voter-approved tax measure. In 2016, it was renewed for eight years by the voters of Berkeley. This year, the sixth year of the measure, BSEP is providing $35 million for our schools, and it supports smaller class sizes, libraries, arts and music programs, professional development, course and staffing for schools, supports for students in school site programs. Our current BSEP measure sunsets at the end of the 2024-25 school year. We will need to renew BSEP in order to continue the critical programming and support that BSEP provides to every student in every school. The renewal will need to be brought to the voters in November of 2024. Next slide, please. BSEP was first created and approved by the voters in 1986 in response to the passage of Proposition 13, which dramatically decreased funding for schools. While the BSEP measure has included various programs and staffing support for schools, one consistent purpose has been class size reduction, which is represented in the blue sections in the pie charts for each BSEP measure. Smaller class size contributes to stabilizing our workforce and differentiates us from other Bay Area school districts. With smaller classes, teachers are able to better respond to individual student needs, and it allows for more direct attention to students. Next slide, please. This is our current BSEP framework. The framework includes three key areas: high-quality instruction, which includes the class size reduction I mentioned earlier, along with essentials for excellence, which involves support for our library, music, visual, and performing arts and instructional technology programming, and finally, effective student support, which includes funds for our middle school counselors alongside other student support staffs, such as our RTI teachers, literacy coaches, and it funds for our affinity-based programming like Puente and the African-American Success Framework. As we think about the upcoming measure, part of our work in this process is to understand and assess the impact of these funds to develop the new measure. We want to ensure the new measure attends to the needs of our students, is aligned with district goals, focused on equity, and resonates with the public. Next slide, please. What we see here is a snapshot of the oversight components to ensure funds are spent in accordance with the measure. The Planning and Oversight Committee is an unelected body that meets regularly throughout the school year. These meetings are open to the public. Meeting agendas include the presentation of detailed plans and reports for all BSEP resources, and all plans, budgets, and reports are posted online. Oversight and accountability protections include fiscal controls such as tracking revenue and expenditures and also annual audits. Next slide, please. Creating a new measure for the ballot for November of 2024 is a two-year process. This slide represents a broad timeline that includes the major phases for work that will lead us to a final measure for board approval by June of 2024. This year, we will focus on gathering feedback on the current and past measures and develop potential framework and financial models for the next measure. In next fall, we will synthesize feedback and land on a preliminary structure for the next measure. In the spring of 2024, we will finalize the measure for approval by the board, and the final measure will appear on the ballot in November of 2024 by the Berkeley voters. Next slide, please. The next two slides describe the roles and activities for our superintendent's work group and our key stakeholders. As I mentioned in the previous slide, for this year, we will focus on gathering feedback to develop the framework and financial models for review and response. The superintendent's work group will lead the efforts around planning, presenting information, and collecting feedback. We are fortunate to have committed members serving on the Planning and Oversight Committee who have a deep knowledge of BSEP. The committee will regularly receive updates and participate in providing input. We will highlight BSEP programs and impacts in our district and program communications to build public awareness, as well as visit with our district advisory groups and community partners to begin to raise BSEP awareness and to gather input. We are planning frequent updates to the Board of Education with a board workshop scheduled for this spring to look at the measure development in more detail and in depth. Next slide, please. Next fall, we will engage the Planning and Oversight Committee, the public, and the board to receive feedback on a preliminary structure for the next measure. Activities will include establishing a working group from the Planning and Oversight Committee and holding budget workshops, which will provide content for the final measure language that will be shared with the board before it is taken to the voters in November of 2024. Next slide, please. Our next steps are to review the current BSEP measure and prepare information for community engagement activities with the Planning and Oversight Committee, our educational partners, and the Board of Education. We will continue to highlight BSEP impact through various communication channels, including the A+ News and the district website to build overall measure awareness. And the next slide, which is the final slide. For additional information about the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program, please visit our website. And this concludes the presentation this evening. And I turn it back over to you, President Brown, for discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Director Fleming. Oh, can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me okay now? I'm sorry, I'm hearing a little bit much. But thank you so much, Director Fleming, for your presentation. And we will now entertain questions from the Board of Education. Board members, if you have questions, please raise your hand at this time.
I have a question, I guess. I'm the only one. Okay, Julie, you can go first.
No, yes. Thank you, Director, Vice President Babbitt. You can go first, and then Director Sinai. I'm so sorry, but the hands are not showing on my screen, so I apologize. Go ahead, Vice President Babbitt.
I have, I guess, comments more than questions. Just want to, in reflecting on this past election and Measure L, one of the biggest reasons that it didn't pass in many people's opinion is because there were no real accountability measurements included in Measure L. And that same language has been spilling over into what the community wants to see from our BSEP parcel tax measure. And so, I just wanted to highlight as we begin planning for what we're going to spend these funds on, that we also need to plan for how we're going to have data to support their outcomes, how we're going to monitor their progress, and how we're going to shift and pivot. I think the days of people just saying yes because we love our schools are over. I think people want us to say yes and use their funds to make an actual difference and to know how we're going to ensure these funds make a difference. So, that would be my feedback as you begin to plan, because that's a lot of the feedback that I've been getting over this past election season as well. Thank you.
I think that's a great comment, Vice President.
I think that's a great comment, Vice President Brown. I think one of the things is also just being very transparent and clear about the oversight that the BSEP has had year after year with our Planning and Oversight Committee and being able to really articulate the oversight that and we, our PNO committee is hugely robust. And so I think that is a lesson learned and needing to be able to be clear on that. I was wondering, Director Fleming, if you could talk a little bit about just like the difference between what the school board and the district does in preparing for BSEP and when it shifts over into campaign? Because there is a difference between what the board does and then kind of when it shifts into campaign role.
Well, to answer the latter first, it will shift into campaign mode after the board approves the measure language in June of 2024. In terms of differentiating the activities and roles between the board and staff, that's something that we'll be working on in detail to bring to you next, and we'll be able to illuminate those differences and collect feedback at that time.
I'm able to see hands now. So Director Vasu Deb, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, President Brown. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank Director Fleming and the PNO, because I know how hard that committee works. Yeah, I have the privilege of being, you know, the board member that's a liaison to the committee, and it's just wonderful just to see how dedicated that committee is. And I look forward to working with you in the spring. I think the outline that you laid out today makes a lot of sense to me. So I just wanted to appreciate you and the PNO very much.
I am going to echo your sentiments, Director Vasu Deb, and thank Director Fleming for all of her hard work. The last time you presented to the board, we had some specific questions, and we made some recommendations. So it was really great to see those questions and those recommendations reflected in your presentation today. We know that BSEP is incredibly important and makes a difference for our schools, so we appreciate you championing this effort and look forward to working with you and going hand in hand to ensure that our community continues to pour into our schools, beginning with BSEP. So thank you so much. I don't see any other questions from the Board of Education tonight, so we appreciate you for your presentation and for all that you will continue to do for BSEP.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. You do the same. And we will move to our next agenda item this evening, which I believe is our dyslexia settlement. And so I'm going to call on Associate Superintendent Joho Gendike to present.
Good evening, directors, and I too want to extend my appreciation to Directors Alper and Sinai, although we haven't had a chance to work together very long. I definitely have appreciated your leadership, and you will be missed. Tonight, as part of our dyslexia settlement, Dyslexia Settlement, BUSD has secured services of Mr. George Ellis, who is our outside monitor. Mr. Ellis is a professor at UC Berkeley and the director of the UC Berkeley Reading and Writing Project, and he's here this evening to present the first of two monitoring reports for the 22-23 school year. And with that, I will welcome Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke. Just checking to make sure everybody can see my screen. Great. So I got 10 minutes here to go through the entire report. Before I do that, I just want to provide some context as to the role of the program monitor. And two things to remember, this is listed in the settlement agreement. The main role here is to be impartial and focus on BUSD's compliance. So I've been working since April with the implementation team on looking at how we're implementing the actions in the Literacy Improvement Program. And the main responsibility here is to submit the report. So this is my first report to you all, though it'll come in twice a year. And we'll be looking at the progress that BUSD has made towards the Literacy Improvement Program. So what I'm going to do here, the complete 14-page report you all have attached to the agenda for the meeting. So I would urge you all to download that and read through it. I'm going to just attempt to give you a brief overview of some of the salient features of the report and the five themes I've identified. So I'm going to start here with just an overview of the structure. So what you'll notice in the report, there's a brief introduction introducing the methodologies used. And then there's the progress report section, which is pretty much the meat of the report. And what you'll notice is that, first of all, I'll be identifying different themes that are in color-coded bands at the top. Then I'll be looking at the progress of the individual actions in the Literacy Improvement Program, a summary of findings for that theme, followed by some specific recommendations. And there is a conclusion at the end with some references. So although there's 35 actions in the Literacy Improvement Program, I think when I was thinking about a way to make this report accessible to the public, but also meaningful for BUSD, I decided to look at some common themes. So I found in the actions, there are these five cross-cutting themes here: accountability assessment, instruction, intervention, and systems of support. So what I've done is I've tried to evaluate progress for the tasks and put the tasks in one of these five buckets. Before I get into the evaluation part, I wanted to go back to the overall goal that BUSD identified this past summer of how to operationalize the Literacy Improvement Program, and this is what the implementation team came up with. So you can read that at the bottom of the screen there. Some terms that stick out there from the messaging is comprehensive literacy program. Aligned to research is a term that sticks out, as well as access to core curriculum, reduce inequities, systems alignment, and partnerships. So when it comes to evaluating progress, it's also important to keep in mind that there's a pretty logical scope and sequence to creating sustainable, long-term change, and that doesn't just happen overnight. So I wanted to bring in a little bit of implementation science to explain what we should be looking at when we're talking about evaluating the pace of progress we expect over the three years of the Literacy Improvement Program. And when most large organizations, like a school district, attempt to implement a new set of strategies and/or innovations across multiple schools, multiple departments, and systems, they will typically go through three phases. So the first phase is what we call exploration to installation, followed by implementation. And then there's a third phase, which is a key phase, where we look at innovating practice in order for it to be sustainable and part of the school culture. So I'm going to give you an example with assessments here. One of the action items is to get a reading data system, RDS. And so here's what that would look like over the span of the plan. So in the first phase, exploration, what happens is Berkeley piloted different reading data systems. And then they ended up purchasing one. It's called DIBELS for K-2 and STAR for 3-8. In that same phase, they had to receive training. So teachers had to receive training. All that happened in that first phase of exploration to installation. Once that was in place, then we moved on to implementation, which is that second phase. So with DIBELS, what we would look for is fidelity. We'd look at, you know, what percentage of students have been given the assessment? We'd also look for how the assessment's being used to drive instruction, and also the connection between the assessment and the different tiers of instruction from tier one to tier two to tier three. And then finally, in order for it to be sustainable, that's where we would start to see some of these more complex uses of the data. For example, all schools using DIBELS for the SST or the IEP process, or reports going regularly home to parents from DIBELS, and net scores from different subgroups that we're worried about. That would all be happening in that third phase there. So why I wanted to bring the implementation science in is just to make sure that we have realistic expectations of where we should be with each one of these actions, considering that we started this work in July 1st of this year was the official start, which we'll talk about in a bit there. And one thing I just wanted to read here from the report. So in the writing of the Literacy Implementation Program, "The science of reading was important to identify what the 35 actions were and why they're important." I think it's helpful when we think about implementation science, it helps us determine what full implementation looks like and how we can set realistic expectations for the appropriate rate of change and a successful translation of these practices into part of the school culture. So let's go into our first theme. The first theme here was the theme of accountability. So what you're seeing here on the left is I evaluated each of the actions according to these four bands. There was the band of substantial progress, adequate progress, minimal progress, and then not evident. So those numbers indicate how many of those actions fell into those bands. So the three means that there were three actions where there was substantial progress, four where there was adequate, two where there was minimal progress, and one where progress was not evident. So some highlights when it comes to accountability. A lot has happened since the turnover with the new district administration in July. Before July, honestly, working with the team, the structures for capturing progress on the Literacy Improvement Program were limited. I did not see much cooperation across different departments, and there seemed to be just a general lack of urgency in this work. And that was surprising. When Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke and Superintendent Ford Morthell came in, this work definitely got prioritized, and I saw the connection between the different departments was starting. And there was also some accountability for cross-departmental collaboration and also holding individuals and teams accountable for their contributions. So that was one of the highlights for accountability. And then where there were these actions here where you see minimal or progress not evident, I made some recommendations. So with accountability, the first recommendation is for you all, the school board, to become more involved with this process. And I'm not sure what that will look like for each of you. I'm sure it'll look different individually. But I think there needs to be much more collaboration between the school board, knowing what the specific actions are, and also what the implementation team is doing. I say this because much of the work got reset because we had a change in district administration. So when the new superintendent and new associate superintendent came on, much of the work that had happened before was lost, much of the momentum. And I'm not sure who that falls on. I'm assuming the school board. But we have to be prepared for a future transition, if that happens in leadership, what that might do to the work. So one way to try to be proactive about that is having more involvement from the school board. Another idea is just accountability with the public. Some type of an easy place to access information. So a webpage is an example that other school districts use. And that could be a place where parents could find the actual improvement plan, like where it's listed, where they could have access to these reports. They could see reading goals for different schools, so a piece of public accountability. And you see that's looking at June. And then finally, just increase meetings between myself and each of the accountability leads that the school district has as well. What I tried to do with each of these recommendations as well, I tried to make sure that I had a specific recommendation that was both time-bound and short-term to make sure to get the action back on track. So you'll notice each one of those recommendations kind of follows that pattern there. So the second theme here was assessment. So some highlights in the area of assessment. This is one of the first steps that Berkeley Unified took in implementing the settlement agreement, was to investigate and pilot a Rita reading data system. So as I said before, DIBELS is chosen for K-2, and STAR was chosen for grades 3-8. Another thing Berkeley's done is they have a clear assessment calendar to communicate to the teachers and to admin which assessments are administered in each of the three trimesters, fall, winter, and spring. And in this past fall, you saw in Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke's report, 97% of students were assessed using DIBELS, and 97% of grades 3-8 were administered the STAR reading assessment. Another piece, that's a highlight under assessments, is the structured time at the elementary level for data analysis that's built into the assessment calendar through the response to intervention cycles, where teachers review classroom data from DIBELS and/or STAR to determine next steps for tier one and tier two instruction. So there's the highlights. Some recommendations here. First of all, middle school. It seems like the data for middle school is lacking. So I'd like to see a detailed information on what's going on for data analysis for middle school by April. The universal screening process, and this is one of those pieces I heard people talking about in the public, making sure that we have a clear system that is coherent across schools. How is each school using the same dataset to figure out which students are at risk for reading difficulties? So I'd like to see that by June 2022. And then really thinking about refining the system that you all started to get parent reports for data from universal screening for all K-2 students, hopefully in place by next year, September 2023. So the third area here is instruction, and there's been much less progress. Highlights with instruction. The big highlight was the implementation of the Fast Track Phonic System, as well as this year, teachers from K-5 have been attending a targeted professional learning session around understanding shifts in the science of reading. This has been provided by the literacy coaches, and it's been tied to their Fast Track curriculum as well as the DIBELS and STAR data. So that's the highlight. That would be the one piece here where you see adequate progress. Unfortunately, you see there's, you know, six items where there's minimal or progress not evident. So some recommendations here. The curriculum audit, as you'll see in the report, it's past due. So that audit needs to begin as soon as possible. Going back to middle school, it's unclear, based on the reports I have received from BUSD, what's going on with middle school supports for language arts. It makes sense, given that they've been focusing more on K-5, but that would be a next step there. I'd also want to see a professional learning plan for middle school, so recommendation two and three go together. And for the implementation team, those are the directors who are making a lot of the decisions. I think would also be helpful just to keep as part of that team their own learning and their reading science. So making sure that the directors are up to date with the latest research that the teachers are getting as well. I think that will help some informed decision-making, and also just keeping that collective learner stance among the decision-makers as well. So I want to highlight here the curriculum audit. So one thing I've noticed when I've been speaking with different staff members and teachers at Berkeley Unified is whenever there's discussions about curriculum, the discussions seem to lack evidence-based criteria, particularly when it comes to the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. I hear a lot about people's feelings, how the adults feel about the project, or how adults, their opinions about the curriculum. But what the audit should entail is actually some evidence-based criteria for how effective your curriculum's been. So by evidence-based, I would want to see data on what evidence does Berkeley have that this curriculum's been effective for your Black students, for your multilingual learners, for your students with IEPs, for all your subgroups that we're targeting? That would be evidence-based, right? And the other piece that's important to remember, you know, the teacher is by far the most important resource for teaching reading. However, the second most important resource is the curriculum. So the curriculum's key. The curriculum decides what materials teachers have. The curriculum decides what strategies teachers will be using. And more importantly, the curriculum decides what materials land in the hands of children. So I would really encourage you to get on the curriculum audit quickly and for that to begin in January of 2023. It also allows for a point of entry for parent participation, because in any curriculum audit, you would definitely want to have input. Because in any curriculum audit, you would definitely want to have input from stakeholders like parents and community members as well. All right, the fourth area here is intervention. This is another area of limited progress. You can see her to the left. Recommendations for intervention. An MTSS staffing plan was to have been created, and I know it's being worked on next week. Dr. Gibbons from the University of Minnesota is coming back in, the outside consultant, to work on that. So I'd like to actually see what that plan looks like by April. The Wilson Reading System has been purchased and everyone's been trained, and there's a really solid system in place. However, I'm not sure how faithfully the program's being used, so I would like to see some data. And the data I'd like to see is about percentage of intervention classes using Wilson, but also the dosage that they're using. Are they doing the thirty minutes required? And also are all of the components being used? So that would be how we would measure fidelity. And then I think this is just something that happened in the implementation of the plan that fell to the wayside. Currently, this section of intervention falls under the Director of Equity. That's the accountability lead. I would recommend that the Director of Special Education also be part of this intervention component, because there are so many action items that cross over both of those departments. And so I'd like to see that. Plus, your Director of Equity just started, right? So it's really hard for someone who's just starting in this role to carry a lot of this work and make sure that it gets communicated to the school sites, where ultimately it will affect change for students. I just feel like I'm talking forever. The fifth theme here is in systems of support where there has been much progress. You can see that here to the left. Actually wanted to read a little bit about that progress from the report. So much of the progress here has been from the work of the implementation team, especially since, you know, Associate Sue Pogendike and Superintendent Ford Morthell came on. There's been solid systems level change. And there's also been an effort to learn more about how to improve systems from the outside consultants. And next week, the consultant, Dr. Gibbons, will be working with the whole implementation team, providing in-depth training on multi-tiered systems of support and providing resources with what that looks like from other school districts on how Berkeley can improve there. And so the recommendations here, this is a big one that I just want the school board to ponder here. I said this when I initially gave you my monitoring schedule back in June. It would benefit this district to have a position dedicated to literacy. Most school districts your size have either a Director of Curriculum and Instruction, who would carry this work, or a Director of Literacy. So it's not an issue of size, I think, with Berkeley Unified. I'm not sure why this position doesn't exist. I look at your org chart, I notice there Berkeley prioritizes equity. So you have a Director of Equity. Berkeley prioritizes research, evaluation, and assessment, so you have a Director of Brea. If we don't have a Director of Literacy or Curriculum, that does say a lot about how it's being prioritized at the district level. So I would really encourage you to think about that. Plus, if there is turnover at the higher levels, there's someone who can carry that work and help connect the dots there. Just another good recommendation is taking a pause in April and just having the implementation team reflect on what we've learned so far, what have been the successes, what are some next steps before planning for the next year. I think that's just solid implementation science. And then the third recommendation is just to get started earlier on planning for next year. And so what we know is most of the teachers on special assignments who help with the professional learning plan are not working over the summer, so we want to take advantage of their skills in April and May to set up the professional learning plan for the next year, so it can be high quality, and we can also be able to work with organizations before their calendar starts getting filled up. A reminder of the timeline here. So my reports are the monitoring reports. These are here on the top. I gave you an overview in June. This is monitoring report one. I'll be back in May for monitoring report two. In the meantime, Berkeley has its own implementation reports that are required by the settlement agreement. Associate Sue Pogendike gave hers in October. That was for the first quarter. Her report for the second quarter will be January and then April. And most of what I base my reporting on is based on the implementation reports that Berkeley gives me plus additional poking and prodding I'm doing throughout the district as well. All right, that was a little more than ten minutes. My apologies. Ten slides here. I would love to open up to questions, and I will stop sharing my screen so I could see you all.
Thank you so much for your presentation, George. And it's okay if it were a little bit more than ten minutes. We appreciate the presentation and all of the thoughtfulness you put into it, and especially all of the hard work that you've done to become acclimated with our community to be able to provide us with such accurate information. We'll call on Director Vasu Dev for questions from the board.
Hi, Mr. Ellis. Just wanted to say thank you so much for your presentation. I think it's really hard to hear, just like, you know, the amount of work that we have to do, just like as a board member. But I know that this is something, you know, I'm glad that with the change in transition, just the focus from our new associate superintendent and superintendent, appreciate you both and know that you're starting off strongly trying to implement our growth areas as much as you can. I have two questions. One, I just have like I love that you mentioned that the board needs to be more involved, but I know also because of our role, right? Like, there's a fine line between the board and the staff, and we don't get involved in implementation. And so I'm wondering, when you talk about board involvement, the way that I could see that happening is articulating, right? You know, our, like, some high-level goals as part of, like, a strategic plan, something like that. But in terms of, you know, operationalizing the parts of the plan, I see that, you know, falling under the positions that you mentioned, right? That I think that makes a lot of sense, like, who owns this work is really important in the district. And I think you brought up some good, you know, potential positions for us to consider a Director of Curriculum and Instruction or Early Literacy. But I think in terms of, you know, how the board gets involved at the policy level, is that something that can happen through a strategic planning process? That's one question. And then the second question would be for our associate superintendent or superintendent, just to see, you know, the issues raised around an audit and the need for an audit. I would just love to hear kind of where the thinking is around that for us internally, just to better understand that. But yeah, I just wanted to thank you very much for everything you've flagged for us.
Thank you. So I'll start with the involvement. I mean, the basic involvement would for you all to read through the plan. It's clear to me that not all board members have read through the settlement agreement, and I think that's key. You all should know what the settlement agreement entails. You should be familiar with the thirty-five actions. Of course, you're not going to do the work. That's why you have staff. But my worry is, if you do have another transition in leadership, who's going to be guiding the new leaders in the plan if you are not familiar with the plan? So that's one piece. Another thing I would recommend is that as board members, reach out to board members from other school districts who have been through a similar process. So I can give you some names of school districts that are both similar to Berkeley Unified and a little bit different, just for you to get their perspective. That's another way for you to become involved in a way that stays within the boundaries of your role as well.
Yeah, that would be great. I'm all ears for that. So yeah, please send that to the full board. We'd love to hear. And I know at CSBA, I'm going to CSBA tomorrow, five in the morning. So literally, there are lots of talks having to do with literacy. So, you know, I'll meet school board directors there that are probably facing the same thing, but especially if you know districts of our size, right? And especially who have had to hire new staff, I would love to be in contact with them. So yeah, thank you for sharing that.
Vice President Babett.
Thank you so much for this detailed presentation, which includes actual recommendations and things that we could actually do to ensure that this work is realized. So it's greatly appreciated. And just in looking at this, so much of it reminds me of exactly what we tried to put in our LCAP plan, the same kinds of steps, the same kinds of measurements and outcomes. And so I'm really appreciative of the recommendations, but I really want to know what are the barriers, if any, to making these recommendations realized? Have they been identified? Are they being discussed? And how are we going to overcome them if so? So I guess my question is probably more for superintendent and staff.
Thank you, Director Babett. So I think definitely appreciate all the recommendations that Mr. Ellis shared. He was able to review them with us prior to this meeting, and many of them we recommend or we agree with. We probably would have had similar assessments and recommendations, as you know, Director Babett. Some of these probably sound familiar, even without Mr. Ellis saying them. So it was nice to have some level of synergy and alignment. I think in terms of barriers, I wouldn't say that there are barriers, except for the fact that there is, like he said, a lot of newness. And just the timeline that it takes to understand what needs to be done, figure out why it hasn't been done, and then put the things and systems in place to make sure that it gets done. And that's the work that we're doing. I think one of the things that Mr. Ellis talked about was, you know, just the impact the change of leadership has, and he definitely recommended that you all, as board directors, get familiar to address that. I would say that one other thing that our associate superintendent Hogan Dyke is really doing to make sure that this lives beyond people is really integrating into the system and structures that is BUSD and as District Office. And what I mean by that is that various teams she brings together that hold this work, right, to make sure they all understand this work, understand their role in this work, the goals of this work, et cetera. And that's inclusive of folks at the central office, but also our site leaders. And eventually will trickle down to our teachers as well. So I just wanted to name that piece because he is right. A lot of things in BUSD, as I will share in my ninety-day report, is people-dependent, and we're really trying to shift that and embed things and incorporate things in the system, so that any one person or two people who leave, the whole, all the knowledge and understanding of where we are in the progress won't go. So I think that is a barrier that we're trying to to work on. But otherwise, I think our work is, you know, we have the disadvantage of time in some sense. This is new to us, but not new to you all and not new to our community, and there is a sense of urgency around it, and we appreciate and respect that. And so we're doing our best to get up to speed and to really, again, shift an entire system in support of this. But all the recommendations we do feel like we could accomplish, I do appreciate how Mr. Ellis put timelines. Like, yeah, most of them, most of them are doable. And so if anything, it might be a conversation around, like, can we push that back a couple more months? Versus there's something that we can't do. I don't think, and Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke, please let me know if you disagree, but the recommendations that Mr. Ellis went over with us, there's none that we were like, we cannot do that. It's just us, again, getting up to speed and figuring out when and how it could happen.
Great, thank you. And then can you just remind me again, which fund pays for Brea? And how are we making sure that that data dashboard and our data collection is going to be incorporated and standardized so that we can have this adequate monitoring and family engagement that the people are talking about, so that families know where their kids are?
So I would have to ask our assistant superintendent, Pauline, to confirm which budget source Brea is paid of. I don't know that offhand. But I will say that we are very excited about the fact that they have been working really closely with our IT team to make sure that that data, all different types of data are available, not just to our families, but to you all, as board directors, and to us as the educators who need that data to inform our practice. So it's coming, it's here, some parts of it are here. But I'll let Director Assistant, sorry, sorry, Pauline, Assistant Superintendent Pauline, see if she knows offhand which funding source.
Is BSEP actually paid, please, pays for the Brea program? So it's funded by BSEP? I don't know if Kathy's still around, but she could elaborate.
She's not. She was at the office, so she's on her way.
Oh, wow.
Now, that's fine. I thought it was paid for by except that someone else thought it was another fund. And I think, again, that that's critical to, again, not only this this measure being renewed, as I was saying during that portion, that that just goes to show how much our community actually does want us to prove out how their funds are being spent, and that we are having educational results which match the intention of our dollars. And so I'm hoping that that the accountability we build here, right, the accountability that we're trying to build through the African-American success framework and all of our different, our C-SACE plans, right? Our LCAP plan, that we're really being smart, leveraging all of this, because I appreciate the lawsuit, but all of this is things that we have been pushing for and trying to get accomplished for so many years. And so I just want to say that we have every opportunity now. We have every reason. Like, I don't, I can't think that we have a lawsuit to make us do it. We have plans to make us do it. We have budgeted the dollars to make us do it, to have it be done. And so the time is clearly here and now, and I think we can do it if we just really create that synergy and get serious at every level at supporting it and communicating it out, so that, you know, everyone knows about it. Some very important people dropped off this call who should really be listening to this right now, because this is going to really determine the work that we're doing. And so how we, as a board, get involved is in how we set the tone of accepting excellence as the only outcome. Right? Accepting our standard and raising our standard of what we expect performance to look like. Because for so long, it just feels like doing as little as possible gets the most gratitude around here. I hate to say it, but we thank people so much for years of things that have not actually been accomplished. And so I'm hoping that through this work, we can shift that narrative through our new leadership team. We need to shift that and make it clear as a board that our expectations and that our vision are that these things get realized, and that when we put a deadline out there, when we put a timeline out there, I don't want you guys to come back with what, we missed it because of this, that, and the other reason, because that's literally been the past record, why we missed it, why these things didn't happen. And so now is the time for us to say, what are the barriers now? Because I don't want to hear about them later. Later, I want to hear we got it done. So thank you for that. And I know we're on the same page.
We're on the same page.
Thank you for that charge, Vice President Babett. Director Alper.
Thanks. Comment and a question. The comment is, to me, on the unless we've already budgeted for it, it seems like a barrier that could be overcome, but would need to be overcome is for one of the recommendations about a new district level position would be paying for it, right? So so, and I don't know whether that's, you know, recommendation that the future board and superintendent are going to want to implement, but if it is, and and I think a lot of times district coordination is missing, and we are very thin district office. But, but people talk about the district as being a top-heavy one. It's not. And when there's budget cuts and we talk about cutting as far away from the classroom as possible, it's that level position that tends to, you know, to go or to be on the chopping block. And so I think if the if the board and the superintendent look at that particular recommendation, say, we need to create a new director level position, that's a pretty significant ongoing financial investment that may be worth it, and that, but that's going to be, it's going to be weighed against all the other important ongoing budget priorities. I see Pauline nodding. So so anyway, I just wanted to sort of name that. That seems like an obvious challenge, unless I don't think we've already budgeted for that as part of what we've budgeted for the dyslexia lawsuit. And then I said one question, Mr. Ellis, is super interesting. And maybe after eight years, I should know the answer to this. But when you talk about an evidence-based way of assessing whether a curriculum is working or not, so whether TCRWP is working or not. And you sort of, you know, you acknowledge that sort of the number one thing is the teacher. So it's not the curriculum, but it's the teacher. And then the number two thing is the curriculum. And we've got, you know, test scores, district assessments, state assessments. And we've got other, I guess, teacher observations and the other, the other different assessments that we have. Like, how do we, how do you isolate out? What is the what is it? The curriculum? Is it professional development? Is it implicit bias? Uh what, how do you, what what does it actually look like, evidence-based? Uh uh an evidence-based tool that that tells us whether the curriculum is working or needs to be changed?
Well, I'm gonna start first of all with the uh position. You could also get creative. It could be a coordinator of early literacy and it could take a reorganization of, you know, a position that already exists like a literacy TOSA and then turning it into a position that would be a director or a coordinator. Um so it doesn't necessarily have to be creating a new position. It could be looking at where you're using your resources currently in the area of curriculum and instruction and repurposing that. So it's just another option for you all to think about. I bring up the criteria and evidence-based because when Berkeley adopted Teachers College, it went off of the list of approved curricula by the state of California. You have every right to do that. However, if you chose to do that as a district, you had to provide the evidence you used to show that it was an effective alternate. So I'm not sure what evidence you all provided. Um but that would be interesting to look at how you determined that it was an effective alternate to the list of curricula that were approved by the state of California. There's many federal level curricular evaluation tools from the Institute of Education Sciences uh achieve the core that set out uh set of criteria that I would uh be glad to sit down with Jill or Nikki and sit down and look at what that might look like. Test scores are definitely part of it, right? You want to look at the gap between certain students and you've been using the curriculum for a while, so we have some pretty solid data on if it's working for those students. That would be one part. We'd also want to look at what we know about reading science, phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, comprehension, vocabulary, like how is it aligned with the research in those five areas? In addition to what criteria is embedded in the curriculum to support multilingual learners um and students at risk for reading difficulty. So those would be seven places to start when we're looking at criteria.
Thanks, that's really helpful.
Student Director Segal?
I think Director Sinai was before me. Thanks. Um thank you for your presentation. Um I was just wondering, in your opinion, how the district is operating in accordance with the settlement agreement? Are we on track to realize all those agreements or um if not, where could we improve? Because there I have heard some concerns that not everything is being realized in the way that it was settled. So in your opinion, how is that playing out?
Broadly, that's a tough question since there's those thirty-five actions, right? So that's why I tried to be a little more granular and um some actions, there has been that substantial progress um and the adequate progress. Um and in many, there has not been. I think it's important to take perspective as well um when we're looking at evaluating progress. So perspective from the community and families, for example, for them, this should have started in November twenty twenty-one. So that sense of frustration and that sense of urgency, we need to keep that in mind from the parent perspective. Because, you know, a kid never gets first grade back, for example. So that push to get things done quickly is understandable. We also need to remember that the people who agreed to this settlement that were Berkeley Unified Staff no longer work at Berkeley Unified. So think about that. People who agreed to this are no longer in the room. So there was a restart when you brought in new district admin that really slowed down the progress, but it makes sense, right? Because, you know, Associate Sue Hogan Dyke and Superintendent Ford Morthell, they never agreed to these terms, right? Their predecessors did. So it took them a while just to get up to speed uh with the settlement agreement in itself. So it's a little hard for me to say just generally where Berkeley is with progress. Um I don't know if that's a fair thing to do at this point when we look at a three-year plan. But I I would go back and look at each one of those thirty-five actions and where they fall. Um so generally, if you read the conclusion part of the report, you'll see progress has been made in accountability in assessments and in systems of support, and progress has not been made in instruction and intervention. So that's more of a general outlook. Did that come close to answering your question?
Yes, thank you.
Director Sinai?
Um, yeah, Mr. Ellis, I really appreciate the presentation and I like the way that you broke it down in the sense of, you know, what things were accomplished and what things uh haven't been and what recommendations you have. Um and I agree with you that from a parent and guardian perspective, um there's a lot, there's it is past urgency. It's, you know, it's it's critical. Um I also know that we were in the midst of a pandemic. Um so I think, you know, between pandemic and getting people back in and the and the delays based on Zoom instruction. Um we're at a point now, fortunately, where I think we can breathe. We've got new leadership that are taking it various, not that the previous leadership didn't take it seriously, but I think we've got space now to breathe and and to be able to realize the recommendations. And I appreciate the recommendations. I had similar questions as Director Alper around how you evaluate and what you meant by a science-based research for TCRWP. I guess my question, um again, I know you're 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 not the solution driver, you're the um auditor, you know, the evaluator of what we're doing. So maybe this is for the superintendent and associate superintendent, but um there is a very strong culture and I think you you talked about it with TCRWP about how teachers feel. And I don't think teachers' feeling is just an emotion. It is based on their their lived experience. Um but how do you use that? And where is the partnership with our teachers as we look at these issues and we look at if we're going to adopt a new way, a curriculum audit? Um are we doing that in partnership with our teachers so that they're engaged and active and don't don't see it as an attack on their practice, but as a way that we collectively can look at how to better improve the practice? Um and do it in a speedy, not prolonged process, you know, overly process-oriented way. So it sounds like there are some tools. Um but I guess my question to Associate Sue um and and superintendent is I heard about how, you know, the district level positions that are needing to be involved, but where is kind of the the site or the teacher level um involvement around how to how to realize some of these things?
I can take a first pass and then we'll see if superintendent has uh wants to add anything. I think as for to your, to the latter part of your question, Director Sinai, about how is the school involved in this? So we have been meeting regularly with principals and um we have a district TSA who meets regularly with the literacy coaches. And what I will say that what's happened over the last three months is we're also seeing these intersections across departments, which is where I think, you know, this work really needs to go. Our Brea department, so specifically uh Director Ruth Steele Brown is working alongside of Director Debbie Dean. And that cross um collaboration, I think, is really important for sharing a consistent message and building some of these structures and systems um for site leaders first to start looking out these intersections between what the data is telling us and what instruction looks like. And then how do we get into that? To that um that space. I think what you're getting at and what Mr. Ellis was talking about is the the mindset shift that's necessary for systems change. Um we, you can't start there, right? So I think what we're doing is building some of these systems and structures for getting regular data. Um we have a new system that we're going to be launching, EduClimber, that's going to be uh uh our dashboard um for looking at data, which will also enable us to identify students that have been involved in various interventions, which will give us um uh eat more easily accessible data to understand where students are and and what that looks like. Um I've, we've had conversations with our principals and looking at some of these foundational pieces and what professional development has been delivered and what professional development is needed. So this intersection between looking at data, building capacity and shifting mindset, that's the place that we are right now. And we really need to build the the relationships and establish the sense of we are trying to learn and understand what has been working for our students and what shifts we might need to make and why we need to make them. And then uh, you know, enlist teachers and our leaders as partners for helping make that shift. Um because in order to make a sustainable system shift, you have to have that buy-in. Um you can't come in and say, we're just gonna, we're gonna move, we're gonna shift everything. Um that 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 doesn't work. So um that's that's sort of where we are right now.
So so I guess that I I agree with you. Change management doesn't doesn't, can't happen first, but having the stakeholders and the buy-in in the analysis and the design is something that i- it's important too. So it sounds like through the TSA and through the literacy coaches and just wanting to make sure that I I just experience in Berkeley is, you know, top-down decisions, especially around curriculum where there's not some buy-in, you know, in engagement among our teaching staff. Um tend to blow up. Um, you know, and and they, you know, they need to be at the table and be a part of it. So just how that works is is kind of where I think the rubber, the rubber will hit the road. Um but the data, you need the data. So I really appreciate the Brea and the data and, you know, getting that analyzed so that it's easily accessible and people can really use it as a tool to inform. Uh the other thing I just wanted to to piggyback on a public comment and I think Mr. Ellis, um something you said, which I think is really valuable and advice to the future board is connecting up with other districts, really important. When I heard the, I think it was Lindsay Nofelt say that Nystrom, you know, made some significant gains in the last year, be great to find out what it was that they did. What were they doing? How long did it take them to even get to the where, you know, you don't just suddenly make the gains. There was probably work that was done to lead up to that. Um so, you know, I would just reiterate the value of talking to districts that have succeeded and how and how they've done it, what obstacles they faced and how they overcame them. Is it really beneficial thing? Thanks.
Director Bossard, and then Vice President Babett.
Thank you. I just wanted to flag uh my second question that I asked initially, which I I don't, I, in this discussion, I'm kind of um getting addressed a little bit, but not so directly. Uh so maybe you can walk me through the next steps after that core audit of the, you know, the reading programs, right? And then kind of what happens? Because I see um the core audit happening in January, potentially, right, according to this timeline. And I know that our superintendent said, you know, a couple of good things may change. But but, you know, I see that happening in January and another recommendation is um, okay, identify supports a tier one middle school language arts curriculum. So for me, I just want to understand after we do that core audit, right? And if we need to get buy-in, like what is, what does the process look like? All right, here are the results of the audit. Does that come back to the board? Like, does that go to our literacy coaches? And then there's this process of like buy-in for any potential changes? Kind, what happens after you, after you're done with that audit? And maybe um Associate Superintendent Hogan, I don't know, uh maybe you can just like articulate for us where your thinking is right now around that, that core audit process.
Well, first I will say that a core audit of this level does not happen in a month. Um it's a, it's a much longer process. So I think in our conversation with uh with Mr. Ellis, what we're talking about is that we need to start that curricular audit. Um and that these thing, uh these types of audits take a longer period of time. So I'm not anticipating that we're actually going to be complete with that because that process starts with establishing the criteria by which you are going to be, can you are, you're going to be doing the audit. So what are the components that you're going to be looking at? How are you, how will you be collecting that information? Who will be helping you with that? Um so our team is going to be in conversation with Mr. Ellison, our other consultant, Dr. Kim Gibbons, um to establish some of that criteria and in consultation with staff and the superintendent uh make some of those decisions to begin, begin that work. Um and, you know, that audit is uh u- usually entails a review of materials and a review of actual practice of what's happening in the classroom. Um and, you know, that the scale and size can vary depending on the decisions that we make in the timeline and the resources that we have to do that work. So what we're going to be turning our attention to um as we begin twenty twenty-three is setting the criteria um for that audit, which will then set us on that longer timeline.
Thank you. Add Director, you asked about just communication or sharing out of that, and we will definitely be sharing that out with with you all as our board directors, as well as um our educator staff and stakeholders. I would say that oftentimes when these audits are done, just to uh uh Associate Superintendent Hogan's point, it's a, it's a massive um uh undertaking. And when she talks about, there's the audit of the curriculum materials and then the audit of the actual instructional practice. They're not usually happening at the exact same time. And so what you might expect or what you might, what you should expect is that there likely be a presentation of like, we've done the audit of instructional materials. This is what we found. And then a different presentation that says this is the audit results of the of the instructional practice. They typically, and I'm waiting, we're gonna meet with Mr. Ellison team just to to get clear about how they do within the criteria, but uh my previous experience in that of um Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke is that they're typically not at the exact same time. So you should expect to get updates or or reports um in in chunks, if you will. Requires a lot of buy-ins, particularly having both come into classrooms and observe practice. So we are gonna do a lot of engagement of our staff and our educators to get them ready, what this is for, what they should expect.
My question is, when we talk about the the change mindset and the buy-in, it it sounds as if we believe that our um our staff and our educators are perfectly happy and satisfied at this point with with what they're doing and how they're doing it and the results. And and I simply don't think that's true. I simply think that they look at the data and are just as appalled as we are and and would appreciate us being able to provide the resources to pivot. You know, when I first became a parent advocate, one of the first things I was taught was people don't go into public education in to into teaching particularly to not make sure that kids come out able to read and able to calculate, right? Like their their ultimate goal is that kids will actually be successful. So w- w- what are we doing to really understand where our teachers and staff are now with buy-in? Because they could be just as ready to move forward as the parents are. They could be just, they could feel the same sense of urgency. But how are we getting that information from our actual teachers to 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 even know what they're thinking? To even know how they're actually feeling at this point in time?
Um, I'm trying, I'm trying to think about how to respond. So one, I want to not confuse um this this notion of buying, and it is a tricky term, with this idea that folks are satisfied. Um I I agree with you that many of our educators are are, you know, wanting to do different and better by our babies. Um I think for me, as a teacher, um and as a person who's worked with teachers for a long time, what buy-in means to me is that one, teaching is an art and a science. And there is no teacher, oftentimes, there's very few teachers who are doing things intentionally that they know is not going to work for kids. So even those things that you might walk into a classroom and say, that doesn't work, right? It's it's usually because I've done it with someone else or I've done it and and it and it's worked. So if you want me to do something different, there's some level of like, I have to I have to see and believe that that is going to make a difference for the students that I serve. So for me, buy-in is 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 not that you're satisfied. Buying is like let me bring you along so that you can see that what I'm asking you to do difference in your practice is actually going to be positively impactful to the students that you serve. Um and oftentimes, that looks like folks trying things out and folks seeing the impact. It sometimes is like them seeing others do that same thing and have impact. But it is not just uh for for most teachers, it's not just to hear you do this. They're like, okay, we'll do it. So for me, that's what buying is. It's it's, to me, it's like, well, I think for any other profession too, right? Particularly for those who've been in pressure for a long time, like, show me what you're asking me to do and why you think this is going to actually be impactful. And then I'll do it. So I'm not, I'm not speaking for Director Sinai, but that's what I think of when I, when I hear the term buy-in, not at all to say that educators are are satisfied with what they're doing, or more importantly, with the results that they're getting. Um I would say that one of the things that we're doing to to bring folks along, um particularly because educators are professionals, right? Is really engaging them in some professional learning. And so during our early release, as opposed to us just taking advantage of our two district-wide PD days, our early releases are now aligned and coordinated across middle and elementary, where we're reading the same text together, shifting the balance, where we're having those professional conversations that sometimes folks forget the teachers are professionals. We want to talk about things and engage and learn before we just go do, right? And so we're in the, we're in these rooms and we're the, our TSAs, our literacy coaches that Jill, that Sergeant Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke just mentioned are leading these conversations alongside of our principals. They're reading chunks. They're reading chunks together, they're making meaning, they're going into their classroom and trying things, they're coming back and talking about what they tried. And what I believe Director Sinai and Director Babett is, you know, that's important work to create common vocabulary, common language and common expectations around what is good reading instruction, so that when we get to the point of our time together as a district where it's time to adopt a new curriculum or where there's time to have those conversations, we're having, we're speaking with the same language. Director Sinai talked about, you know, really engaging our educators in, in the analysis and the design, and that is critical, but it, it doesn't work if everybody is analyzing with a different framework or designing with a different end in mind. So some of the pre-work that we're doing is really trying to get on the same page and speak the same language, so that when it's time for the analysis and design, we're, we're not, you know, competing with, with frameworks. I would, you know, one of the hard things about any change management is that oftentimes folks want to get straight to, to impact or the results and forget about all the work that it takes to lead up to that, particularly the implementation piece, right? So before you see any results, you're gonna have to first see changes in practice, the implementation piece. And so there's pre-work to even that, and that's the work that we're doing. So an, an old superintendent of mine said, you gotta go slow to go fast. I know some folks hate that saying. Sometimes I hate it too. But we really are kind of doing the ramp-up work to make sure that folks have the right mindset about reading instruction and what it looks like, so that when it's time to adopt, they'll be ready, we'll be speaking the same language, and then we'll move to the actual implementation and changing of practice. And then you will see the results that we want for our babies. You'll see some results changing before that, but that's when we should see some big changes. I don't even know what question I was asking or answering at this point, but I hope it made sense. If it didn't, tell me, I'll try again.
Well, let me see, you could try again, because.
Can I, can I add to that, though, to one, one task that you all have substantial progress in was there was an evaluation of the staff perceptions about changes in general in special education, research-based reading practices. So you have data on your staff beliefs, and that might be something to share with the board, that, that data that the team looked at. Because that's one of the tasks that was part of the settlement agreement, was for the district to collect data on how your staff perceives these changes. So that might be a nice starting point to get into the mindset of what your teachers are thinking.
What'd he say? I see a, a few head nods, George, so I think the board agrees with you that that would be a good place to start. I don't see any other hands, I want to make sure I'm not missing anyone, but I don't see any other hands for you, George. And so thank you so much for this presentation this evening. Thank you for being courageous enough to give us those hard feelings that we have to swallow, but for encouraging us and providing us with recommendations and steps on how to get to where we truly want to be as a district. And so thank you so much. This is your second presentation to the Board of Education, third to some of us. And so we just thank you for your ongoing partnership. As well as to you, Associate Superintendent Hugendike and Superintendent Ford Morthell. Many of you all may not know this in the community, but they have already making, been making strides and making some very important changes. And so we, George was able to highlight that with us, first President Babett and I, a couple of weeks ago. And so we want to celebrate and appreciate you for that work, Associate Superintendent Hugendike and Superintendent Ford Morthell. At this time, so thank you, George. Have a good night. At, at this time, we don't have any other agenda items, so we will move to the second opportunity for public comment for board, for, for the Board of Education, and then we will move to second opportunity for board comments. So if you'd like to speak to the Board of Education once more, please raise your hand right now. We will begin the public comment period with Lindsay Nofelt, followed by E. In, and we will give both of our speakers two minutes on the clock.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, seeing nods. This is gonna be super messy, so I apologize, because it's just like my hot take. Number one. Ah, now, I've got to exit full screen, sorry. It is encouraging that work has started toward improving literacy outcomes for our children in Berkeley after a long delay. And I speak for a lot of people when we applaud the current team for holding this work and building the systems that can be used longer term. I've got a couple of points to make. This settlement is about literacy, not dyslexia. Stop calling it the dyslexia settlement. It's broader than that, and it's more important than that. When you shoehorn it, it's not good. When you make the evidence in the audit for the curriculum, you need to include a survey on parent supplementation. Your data is hidden because parents pick up their children. I've picked up both of my children. And so you're not going to see that on the test scores. There's a grief cycle when people realize that what they've been taught is wrong. I thought I got two minutes. I'm sorry. Did I get two minutes? Thank you. There's a grief cycle when people are told that what they were doing or what they were sold was wrong. I encourage everybody to listen to Sold a Story. It's a six-part podcast by Emily Hanford from American Public Media, and it is eye-opening about how Gay Sue Penel drives a Maserati while kids don't learn how to read. We need clarity on how Fonda's and Penel benchmark assessments are being used. They are no better than flipping a coin in finding out who can and cannot read, who needs help. If everybody is trained in Wilton, why are we still using LLI and reading recovery on students? This is explicitly, it says, "No, thank you" in the settlement to little level literacy intervention by Fonda's and Penel and reading recovery. So are the, the work, the most people who are struggling right now are the people who have already fallen through the cracks? And that's what I'm most concerned about. So when we look at our progress, notice that we're making great strides, we're doing great work, but the people who are already struggling aren't seeing any progress on these. And the ones that are under urgent, under urgent notice from George are targeting the people who already are in tier two, or tier two or tier three. Thank you so much. I appreciate this.
Thank you as well, Ms. Nofelt. Next, we will move to our final public commenter for the evening, which is E. In. And E. In will also be given two minutes, so we'll start with a one-minute timer and then loop back around. Hi, Ian. Please feel free to begin whenever you're ready. If we are still waiting for Ian, we could actually go to JD, which is another public commenter.
Oh, sorry. I, I didn't realize I was mute, I was muted. Sorry, I'm here.
Oh, that's okay. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for waiting. My name is Eliza No. I'm a parent in the district, wanting to comment on George Ellis's monitoring report and the, the follow-up discussion, which highlighted two stunning revelations. One was the need for professional development in the latest developments in reading science among the implementation team itself. And the second was that not all members of the school board has actually read the lawsuit settlement agreement. Now, that's a problem if it seems that parents and caregivers seem to know more about the science of reading and the literacy lawsuit than the people that we charge to teach our children. So I think it's very important for, for the, for the board and for the implemented, implementation team to inspire trust in, in families and caregivers by inviting us and eliciting our input as Mr. Ellis suggested that you do. So it, it's more transparent, but not just in terms of transparency of the data, but also inviting our input into the implementation of the, of the settlement itself. Thank you.
Next, we will have JD.
Hi, this is Jamila Dunn. I had called in on October 12th to ask about how to access my, my children's assessment records and was told that I would receive that information at the school conferences, teacher-parent conferences. For one of my kids, I received the most recent record from this year. The other one, I received nothing. I had to call the Brea office, and it took nearly a month and five emails to get the majority of the assessment records, but not all of them. And what they showed was that my younger child is very far behind in the red on all Dibbles levels except for one, and he's been in that red since day one. And I've been fighting for him to get interventions, and it has been very difficult. And when I started the IEP process, he did receive intervention support, and he is getting reading recovery. And I just feel very torn because I appreciate all the hard work of the educators that are working and doing their best to help teach my kid. And I know they're doing what they think is best, but it's not really working and it's not aligned with the agreement, the settlement agreement. So I just don't really know what to do. You know, I, I want to express gratitude to them for all their hard work and effort, but I also want my kid to learn how to read in a timely manner. So I need your help, board members and higher-level administration, to make these changes. It's not just my kids, it's all kids. I have friends and neighbors who have kids in third and fifth and beyond who really don't know how to read, and their kids are getting accommodations like having teachers read instructions to them, but they're actually not getting instruction in how to read themselves. And I just hope that you will seriously consider a more inclusive curriculum for all learners. Thank you.
Thank you as well. We will move to our second opportunity for board member comments for Julie and Ty. This is your last time to say something as directors of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. Well, we know Ty is gonna say his standard, I pass.
No, I just wanted to, I wanted to give the superintendent another opportunity to answer Vice President Babett's question from before. No, I'm.
That's what you were gonna say. You could use your comments on that.
I passed. Director Babett's right. I passed.
And, and I have something I need to say. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for all the kind words.
Yes, that was very nice.
We'll miss you.
Well, we, we love you. We will miss you all so much. And going on will not be the same without you, but hopefully you will be nearby. And it will be great with the new team. You guys will rock. All right, do you want to keep staying on? We could keep staying on. We can, but in another life.